I said.
Hey. So I'd like to call him. This is the shore of the shore to order at 7:30. We have all members. And the comments. That is being noted according to us. And he has been proud to be known as a small town as well. Thank you. I'd like to welcome everybody and thank you in advance for your time, time and patience. So we get back there this evening. I would also like permission to move the proclamations from the village board president's report up to the front of the agenda. Because we have guests on here this evening and like to throw any objection. All right, seeing that, I will go to. And then A. One, two, three, yeah, one, two, no. Two. Yeah. It's one and two, but we have three proclamations. All right, the first proclamation is in honor of the 54th Annual Professional. Oh, sorry, you got a. All right, the first proclamation is in order to recognize National Law Enforcement Memorial Week 2023. Whereas in 1962, President Kennedy proclaimed May 15th as National Peace Officer Memorial Day and the calendar week in which May 15th falls as the National Law Enforcement Memorial Week. Whereas established by a joint resolution of Congress in 1962, National Law Enforcement Week pays special recognition to those officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty or the safety and protection of others. Whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington DC. Whereas the names of 224 dedicated public servants who have paid the ultimate sacrifice will be engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial with the calendar year 2022. Whereas the Village of Shorewood recognizes the risk and sacrifice required to perform public safety duties 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, 365 days a year. Whereas the Village of Shorewood appreciates that the members of the Shorewood Police Department use the greatest level of care and caution during each call for service in order to protect the safety of every member of the community. Whereas the Village of Shorewood values that the Shorewood Police Department has willingly collaborated in what is recognized as an ongoing process to communicate with community stakeholders about the role of law enforcement in the village's desire to serve residents, visitors and employees in an equitable manner. Whereas the Village of Shorewood encourages the community to join the members of the Shorewood Police Department in this solemn week of national honor by expressing thanks in writing and in person. Whereas in 2023, the National Law Enforcement Memorial Week formally runs from May 15th through May 21st. Whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial 34th Candlelight Feshel on the evening of May 13th, 2023. Whereas May 15th is designated as Peace Officer Memorial Day and honor all fallen officers and their families, and US flags should be flown to half staff. Therefore, be it resolved that the Village of Shorewood will serve May 15th through 21st, 2023 as National Law Enforcement Memorial Week in the Village of Shorewood and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and communities across the nation. As a service of two individuals who are retiring. You guys want our vessel for who gets to go first? Okay, okay. We'll go alphabetically. To recognize the retirement of Detective Gary Lenda. Whereas Detective Gary Lenda has stressfully earned the praise and respect and gratitude of his coworkers, friends, families, family and the community at Barge for his dedication and service to the Shorewood Police Department and to the Village of Shorewood, which has contributed to the overall safety and welfare of Shorewood citizens. And whereas Gary Lenda began his career with the Village of Shorewood on September 8th, 1997, and served as a police officer and detective until his retirement on June 23rd, 2023. And whereas Gary Lenda gained and displayed expertise through his work and performed with confidence and skill during his employment, completely meeting the challenges of his responsibilities as a police officer and a detective while serving as a fine example of a dedicated employee. Now therefore be it resolved that the Village of Shorewood herewith congratulates and commends Gary Lenda for his many years of dedicated service and recognizes his contributions to the Village of Shorewood and wishes him a happy and healthy retirement. And be further resolved that Chief of Police Heather Work on behalf of the Village of Shorewood will present a copy of this resolution of Gary Lenda, an outstanding employee. His respect and gratitude. First from family and the community of Barge for his dedication and service to the Shorewood Police Department and to the Village of Shorewood, which has contributed to the overall safety and welfare of Shorewood citizens. And whereas Mark Myers began his career with the Village of Shorewood on October 12th, 1992, and served as a police officer until his retirement on May 13th, 2023. And whereas Mark Myers gained and displayed expertise through his work and performed with confidence at scale during his employment, completely meeting the challenges of his responsibilities as a police officer while serving as a fine example of a dedicated employee. And now therefore be it resolved that the Village of Shorewood herewith congratulates and commends Mark Myers for his many years of dedicated service and recognizes his contributions to the Village of Shorewood and wishes him a happy and healthy retirement. And be further resolved that Chief of Police Heather Work on behalf of the Village of Shorewood will present a copy of this resolution to Mark Myers, an outstanding employee. For a special order of business for a Consider Revolution 2023 12-12, a resolution confirming obligation to contribute to North Shore Fire Department's budget to pay debt service on bonds issued by the City of Glendale on behalf of the North Shore Fire Department. This item is coming back to us by procedure. It was approved unanimously at the last board meeting and then it goes around to the municipalities again. And it does relate to the improvements at the Glendale Fire Station. With that, I will open up to any questions on the board and we do have Chief Whitaker on Zoom. Is there anything you'd like to add to this, Chief Whitaker?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
You might be on mute. Much better than.
How about now? Any better?
Mm-hmm.
And the nice things. So you got.
We are with us trying to figure out the.
Sound if it's on our side. Chief Whitaker, do you want to try it again?
How's this now?
Yes.
Awesome.
So is there anything you'd like to add at this time?
Real briefly, I think you introduced it very well, but this is basically saying that the Village of Shorewood is now confirming the obligation that it tentatively approved in fall of 2022 for the borrowing that the City of Glendale is doing on behalf of the department for the reconstruction of that fire station in Glendale. Each department then pays its portion based on the North Shore Fire Department funding formula that is a portion of equalized value population and calls for service. And that is recalculated every five years. So the estimates after 2025 and post, well, I should say after 2025 are estimates that are included in Appendix A. The debt service for 2024 is the actual number. So we appreciate the support that we have gotten already to this point. We are underway with construction or actually demolition at this point. And the City of Glendale completed their borrowing last week within the parameters that were set as far as interest rates and other parameters for the borrowing.
Thank you. Any questions? Yes?
So your comment, I see the asterisk at the bottom, amounts for NFSD municipal contributions will change. That's because based on the rolling, the changes that come every five years, you said?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And I'm sorry, the total debt service here, what was the total project cost? I'm thinking 17 million or?
17 million total, but the borrowing is for 8.7 because of other funds on hand and other funding mechanisms that are used toward the project. The 17 million is total after borrow, after interest and everything. The actual construction cost is about 12 million.
Thank you.
Ready for a motion?
I am.
Okay. I move to approve Resolution Number 2023-12, Resolution Confirming Obligation to Contribute to North Shore Fire Department's Budget to Pay Debt Service on Bonds Issued by the City of Glendale on behalf of the North Shore Fire Department.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion by Trustee Moore Baldoff, seconded by Trustee Kudo. Any further discussion? Hearing none, this will be a roll call vote.
Trustee Ursink?
Aye.
Trustee Moore Baldoff?
Yes.
President McCague?
Aye.
Trustee Stobrin?
Aye.
Trustee Lynn?
Aye.
Trustee Arndurfer?
Aye.
Trustee Kudo?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you, Chief Whitaker.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
You too. Item 4B, Street Lighting System Replacement Plan Presentation, Rich Them. Oh, is it Tim or Them? Okay, Tim. Engineer Project Manager.
You.
We've been looking forward to this.
Me too. Well, he's getting that set up. So I've been invited here to follow up with the conversation or the presentation that I gave back in March and provide an update on the Street Lighting System Replacement Plan. If you want to go to the.
And there's no, this is presentation and questions, there's no action requested of the, required of the board this evening.
And so in general, we completed the final version of the report provided to the village last week. And this is just to kind of outline the findings. And so you can go to the, oh, okay. Okay, so I figured, you know, everybody's probably busy, so I thought I'd run through very briefly all the information that had been presented last time. If there's anything you wanted me to fill in a little bit further, I guess, just jot it down and then at the end we can, I can fill in the information.
That's great. So we'll go, we'll hold questions till the end.
Yeah.
Excellent.
So again, I'll just kind of briefly run through a lot of the stuff that I ran through last time in terms of the project scope, go over the existing lighting infrastructure overview to provide a refresher there. I'll review again the project background drivers and all, or project background and drivers. And then the issues associated with the existing system. And then I'll review the proposed improvements. And then we'll get to the implementation plan and presentation of that. And then I'll follow up with reviewing next steps that would be to actually implement the plan. So in general, the scope of this project was to generate a report to provide a replacement plan from a high level standpoint, to provide a general outline and budgetary information for planning purposes to allow for more in-depth design efforts to be completed after initial plan is created. As a part of that, we developed quantities for the existing circuit cable lengths within the village as well as light fixture counts. We reviewed the existing infrastructure for upgrades to LED conversion and making sure there weren't any big issues associated with that. We developed costs to replace the existing street lighting system to address the identified issues. And then we developed energy usage cost values to compare the existing system versus a LED upgrade and what that energy savings would be. And then we assisted in reviewing information from a third-party LED lease company. So just a quick refresher on the lighting infrastructure overview, just so everybody kind of has a little bit of insight on the terminology. So in general, within the village, there's several lighting control cabinets which are on the left side there. Those get power and then they power and control the lights within the village. And those are connected to the lights with wiring. It's either direct buried, which means just the wire is straight in the ground, or it's running conduit. And then those are routed through pole boxes and various points of the village for access for maintenance and troubleshooting. And then those are connected into light poles. And depending upon the type of light pole, it's either directly spliced under the ground or there's a pole handhole, which is a cover that comes off where you can make your wiring connections to the wiring within the pole. And then the poles within the village, this one is a direct burial pole, so there's no base on the pole, which is what the, all the poles in the replacement plan have. And then on the top of the pole is the complete housing is the light fixture or luminaire. And within that is the lamp and ballast and electronics if you have LED lighting. So project background and drivers, again, main drivers were to replace the aging infrastructure. A lot of the wire and light fixtures and controllers, in particular within the residential areas in the village are from the 1970s, making them about 50 years old in a lot of the areas, which has passed their typical life of 30 to 40 years. There's been frequent points of failure experienced within the village, a lot of maintenance. So just trying to correct those issues. Additionally, as we dug into it, we found that the system voltage is outdated voltage. And so we'd like to convert that to a current standard configuration. And also, as I mentioned, the system routinely has faults causing outages, poor reliability and significant maintenance. So we'd look to correct those. And then also, a plan would be to correct existing infrastructure code-related issues. And just to touch real quick on each of those that was mentioned at the last meeting, the existing system doesn't have a dedicated equipment grounding conductor. And that coupled with the poor cable quality can lead to undetected cable faults, which leads to potential safety issues. In addition, there's insufficient working clearance in front of the fire station lighting controller on the bottom left there. It should have 42 inches and it only has about 30 inches there. And then also the existing pole boxes, which are on the right side there, don't need any tools to access the cabling and they're also labeled valve. So both of those should be addressed. And then also due to the older system voltage, the, per the current codes, the light poles should really be at 22 feet, but they're only at 13 feet. So a correction to that voltage should be made to allow for the light pole heights to be acceptable. Next. And then here's just a quick rundown of the existing system upgrades. So most of the village is original to the 1970s. The big takeaway here is all the highlighted areas along Oakland and Capitol. Those have been completely upgraded other than LED conversions fairly recently. Along Molson Drive, that's been upgraded recently. And then Lake Drive along the right side of the map is planned to be upgraded in 2025. And then within the rest of the village, there's a few pockets where there's been some level of upgrades, but not, not complete upgrades to this point. And in general, there's approximately 700,000 feet of cable replacement required. There's about 1,350 streetlights, 350 of those have been replaced and about 60 of those are LED along Molson Drive. There's nine control panels total, so that's what all the kind of arrows pointing are, are all the control panel locations and five of those nine have been replaced. And in total, there's about 35 to 40 circuits and about 16 of those are original to the system from the 1970s. Having said that, they're much bigger than a lot of the other circuits. So it's probably 75 to 80% of the wire is original to that 70s installation. All right, next slide. So as part of the proposed improvements suggested in the replacement plan, one would be to replace the remaining original lighting control panel. So as I said, there's four remaining, there's three visible here, the, there's actually, you see four, but one of them isn't used anymore. And then there's a fourth one at the Lake Bluff Elementary. So the plan would be to replace those and determine exact quantities and locations, which I'll mention as next steps later on as a part of future design phase. Also, we, due to the relatively new age of the Capital Drive and Oakland Avenue lighting installations, we'd plan to just upgrade those to LED, all the wire and voltage and control cabinets are all except, are in good condition there. So the plan would be to just replace lamps in those locations. And then for the remainder of the village, we, due to the 50-year-old age on a lot of those light fixtures, we'd plan to do full light fixture replacements on those as opposed to just lamp replacements. Next slide. And then in addition, we'd plan to replace all the original light poles and internal pole wiring for that original infrastructure. Plan to replace all the original and non-compliant pole boxes within that area. Replace all the direct burial wire with new wiring that has phase conductors with a dedicated equipment ground indirectionally drilled conduit. And then also would plan to install a ground wire in some of those circuits that were highlighted. Some of those did not have ground wires installed at the time of their installation. So we'd try to pull a ground wire in to make those have a proper equipment grounding conductor. Next slide. So here's where I will get into it a little bit more. So as a part of the, like I said, as a part of the plan, we generated quantities for the existing system. And so these quantities here are based upon existing GIS information, existing plan sets and information from the village staff. And then costs were generated based upon information from contractors, Wisconsin DOT and similar project costs and also budgetary pricing from vendors. So as you can see here, we totalized all of those values and provided a 40% contingency for undeveloped costs as well as engineering and both design and construction. And so total project cost for that is about $20.7 million. In addition, I don't have it on here, in the report, we provided energy savings calculations. And so right now annually, the lighting system is using or costs about a little over $75,000 a year in electricity. The cost savings would probably be about 60, 65%, which would be about $50,000 savings annually to convert to LED. So there's some savings there that will be realized. If you want to go to the next slide. So given the large cost of the project and the large size of the project, we spoke with some local area contractors to kind of get a feel for how quickly the project could be done. Feedback we got was five years is kind of the minimum that you kind of want to shoot for to get a project of this size done. So we use that as our kind of baseline project timeline. And then generated additional timelines as options so that there'd be some, some ability to compare the different timelines. So we picked five years, eight years and 10 years. Much beyond 10 years, it gets to be quite a long time. In general, any of these projects is pretty significant size regardless of how many years you pick. So there's not a ton of scale of economy on these. You're pretty much going to get similar pricing, similar bids. So there's not a ton of benefit one way or the other from that standpoint. There is some benefit to going to a shorter term. Obviously, it reduces the cost a little bit. This, these prices were based on a 3% inflation, but as you draw, we all know inflation is kind of unpredictable. So historically, that's been a pretty standard selection. But in addition, going with a shorter term provides hopefully a little bit more uniformity between the various phases. So product-wise, some products can become obsolete or get changed out, especially when it comes to LED fixtures. And so kind of the more you draw it out, the more chance you have that you may need to make a product switch partway through your upgrades. Additionally, as I was saying earlier, there's the safety and maintenance related issues. The longer that the projects go on, the more you have those as potential impacts. Also, the higher probability that some of the existing equipment may fail and then you're paying for it kind of as an emergency replacement as opposed to a planned upgrade. And so with that, we'll go to the next slide. And so in general, those five, eight and 10-year cost values are kind of the options for implementing the project replacement. In general, a five-year would probably be the preferred option as long as it's can be afforded. It's kind of, as short as you can go and still afford it is probably the best route to take. Just kind of provides a little bit, like I said, alleviates those issues that I mentioned. And then just kind of wanted to show on the table there how it, a project or how that, that approach would kind of get implemented. So in general, we'd start with a design of the first phase. And then the following year, you would bid that and do construction. And then you'd start the design for the next phase. And then you'd continue that on until the final phase was completed. So, next slide. Which then takes us to the project next steps. So once a plan period is determined or a number of years for implementation would be determined. Some additional items that should be considered. In particular, a lot of these would be expected or be advantageous to do during the Phase One design for the implementation plan. One of the big ones would be LED fixture selection. I know there's been some feedback from, or questions from staff and from residents in terms of interested in some of the different aspects of the light fixtures. This would be a great time to get input from people in the village of Whitefish Bay. They set up some kind of sample areas, so you may want to do that, kind of get input, especially with it being 1,200, 1,300 lights within the village. Depending upon which route you go, that, that can be easier sometimes and harder. So if it's just along like Capital Drive and Oakland Avenue, that would just be a light, a lamp replacement. So it's fairly simple. Along the residential streets, it's actually full light fixture replacement. So trying a few options may be a little bit more costly. So you may want, but I still think it may be advantageous to let people see that and provide input before you go a full-scale replacement. When doing that fixture selection. it'd be some questions that we've gotten have been in regards to light color temperature. So how yellow or how blue the light is. Additionally, making sure that the fixtures, if it's important are, have dark sky compliance. The fixtures that have been getting installed are dark sky compliant currently. But just if, if any changes were made there, just trying to continue that. And also the, the lighting plan was put together assuming that light poles will go in the same spots and have the same, what we call light distribution types. So they spread the light out the same way as existing. If there was any interest in modifying that to let's say increased light levels or you know, you have people complaining because lights in their houses or whatever. That would be a time where you could kind of make some modifications to address those issues. And then also make sure that a light fixture selected to kind of match whatever those criteria are. In addition, some follow-up could be done with the third-party lease company. I guess one thing to point out, so we did review some of the preliminary information from that company and also looked at the village of Whitefish Bay and kind of what they did and compared. I think I went through a lot of that at the last meeting. I guess if anybody has any questions on that, they can feel free to ask. I don't get too much into that. But one important thing to point out with the village of Shorewood is that while that company proposal will allow for a conversion to LED from the existing non-LED lights, it won't necessarily address any of the reliability, safety or other issues that are within the village. And so those would require a lot more work to, to accomplish. And really the conversion to LED is a relatively small or, or lamp, I should say, is a relatively small cost relative to everything else. For example, if you were to look back at that cost slide, one of the line items is to, to pay for the lamps to replace Oakland Drive or Oakland and Capital Drive. And I think that was about $130,000, that total cost. So while it's not cheap, it's still, you know, relative to the overall cost of the project, not a, a significant portion. Having said that, in particular, for those two main thoroughfares, it could be advantageous to get a formal proposal from that company to at least do those. It doesn't seem too practical to do them in the residential areas due to the significant age of those fixtures as it would be just putting lamps in those older fixtures. Also thing to follow up on would be funding opportunities. Typically those are issued on an annual basis. So really we can't predict right now what the funding is going to be two year, even two years from now. So just checking funding agencies such as Wisconsin Focus on Energy, WISDOT, federal funding to see what's available. And then also a lot of times those programs have requirements for the products that are installed, typically having to do with energy efficiency, sometimes, you know, buy American, that sort of thing. So making sure that the products that you're selecting meet whatever those funding requirements are. And then also as a part of that detailed design, kind of taking the budgetary cost or the target cost for construction and using that as a template to set the phase one installation area. In general, like with that five-year plan, as I said before, there's about 16 circuits and four control cabinets that need to be replaced within the village. So you'd plan to kind of have about one control cabinet and three to four circuits per year replaced as a part of that. And you kind of pick an area and then, and then kind of replace that and then move on from there. In terms of making important things to you remember when making selections on kind of where, where to start. Things such as like, it's my understanding that the cable failures haven't necessarily been sequestered to one location or anything. But if significant cable failures were starting to become experienced in one particular area, maybe that merits replacement first. Also potentially like along Lake Drive where that major project is being done. There's a lot of kind of offshoot light fixtures that are powered off of that. Maybe it might make sense to take some of those off to avoid complications during the construction of that. Other than that, the selection really just comes down to kind of pairing up that overall cost with what the improvements you can do for that. And then once that initial group is picked, also kind of outlining about approximately where the other phases would, would go. So that there's a rough, rough plan in place to, to kind of create a template for the other phases. And then lastly would be the lighting control cabinet design. There's been some questions, right now the existing system voltage is 480 volts. Few people asked questions about like, why would we want to change that? This would be the time to kind of look at that in general. When you cut down your voltage, it increases your wire size. But at the same time, we're reducing load because we're switching to LED light fixtures. So this would be the time to kind of look at those trade-offs between each other and kind of see where it all shakes out. In addition, on the map on the upper right, the three stars are kind of the three existing control cabinet locations where all these light fixtures are powered from. And so another thing that could be done is kind of, they're, they're fairly centralized right now. So it may be advantageous to break those out into, you know, maybe instead of using one, like for example, that star on the upper left powers the entire upper left quadrant. And then the star in the middle powers the upper right and the lower left quadrants. And so between those two controllers, that's like three quarters of this, of the village within, from two control cabinets, which means long runs to get to certain lights. It may be advantageous to break those out a little bit and potentially save a little bit of money on wire, potentially reduce wire sizing. So again, just something to explore. And then also in tandem with that, looking at the different enclosure types. So the ones on the left by the fire station is what's called a medium voltage trans closure. So it's a, it's got a high volt or medium voltage in it. So 13,000 volt power on one side. And then on the other side, it's got 480 volt power. It's a bit bigger, a bit more expensive, bit harder to get. Whereas on the right side is what we call a Wisconsin DOT style cabinet. And those are the ones that the village has like along Lake Drive and Capital Drive and Oakland Avenue. Basically all the newer installations have kind of gone to that. So and then once all that's kind of determined, then you move on to kind of doing a detailed circuit layout and determine that. With that, that would be the end of the plan. Are there any questions? Yes.
I have a question. How, and I know you can't speak to this specifically, but like in general, how variable have material costs been in recent years? I know you built in.
I think that they have settled back down for the most part. One of the main outliers I'd say would be if you were to go with a medium voltage trans closure cabinet, we're still like out almost a year and a half to get the transformer that goes in there. And that's still a variable item. But in terms of wire, light fixtures, all the basic materials that, that you would have on a lot of this, they've
pretty stable.
Quite a bit. Yeah.
The Arndorfer has his hand raised. Excellent. Trustee Arndorfer.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks a lot. It was very informative. Appreciate it. I guess the question I had is I, I, I think the five-year timetable makes sense. Is it feasible to accelerate that to a three or anything like that? Or is that, is five pretty much as quickly as we can do this?
Yeah, I, I mean, you might be able to get it done one, one year earlier. But just given the size of it, it's just probably not practical to do it any, any shorter than that. Especially if you're looking for input from the public and other things, you know, just kind of take some time to kind of get, get everything through. And then while costs are not variable, lead times still can be variable for products. So designing for a little bit worse timeline and getting it done a little quicker is better than the opposite around. So.
Thank you.
Trustee Kudo.
I have a question regarding safety, specifically the cabinet at Lake Bluff Elementary School. Last time we talked very briefly about potential issues with that cabinet. I don't think, you know, around there, you elaborate a little bit. We didn't get into it very much last time, but.
Yeah. So in terms of the safety issues, the main issue has to do with the fact that the cable were kind of twofold. One is, is the bigger issue is that there is no equipment ground conductor. So there is a, one of the wires serves as a ground path, but it's experienced faults. And within the existing system, there's nothing under normal conditions to make the power source trip out. And so it takes certain things to make that occur. And so depending upon where the faults are, where the least path of resistance is, that current is going to try to get back to its power source in whatever that kind of least resistance path is. So in general, it could be anywhere from the, wherever that fault is to wherever it jumps back into the power source, I guess I'll say, where that ground fault could occur. So it could be just a, if it's a, you know, short fault, it could potentially jump over the, the break in the wire and continue on its way. If it's a more major fault, you know, it could find an alternate path back in terms of probability or anything. I mean, it's kind of like a lightning strike. There's not, you can't really predict exactly where it's going to go or, or what it's going to do. It's just known that it's going to find a way to get back and.
Okay, assuming that we, that using the five-year plan and let's say we, that's the first cabinet we were, or the next board decides, whatever. Are, are there any things, is there anything we can do now to lessen how potentially dangerous that cabinet would be? I mean, there are in elementary school. You know, is there a way to ground that cabinet or a way to, to add temporary measures that would alleviate the issue prior to us replacing that cabinet?
So in terms of the system as a whole, I would say not really. In terms of doing something specifically at the elementary school, I'm not sure. I could look into that. It's not a, a typical thing that we have to be concerned with. But so I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head. Yes. I mean, if it stays locked and there's no access to it, I don't think there's any concerns any more than any other cabinet within the village. So the biggest thing with age relative to the cabinets, I mean, you could have a failure. There's transformers in there. So just like any pole-mounted lighting transformer or power transformer. I mean, there's the potential for it to, to explode or something. But I don't know if, if, you know, at this point, if there's anything I'd necessarily do proactively about that other than replacing the cabinet.
Yeah, I mean, I guess my question is, you know, it's, I recognize it's 50. And they're, you know, it in lieu of a catastrophic failure like you would have on a pole or whatever. I just want to make sure that there's not, it's something we can do in the meantime to, if there's a major failure in the line and it, you know, it tries to find the path of least resistance back to the power source. But that, you know, that we can't, we can't take care of that problem. A, can we find another path, bury another path? I mean, I don't know, but I just want to make sure that we're not leaving something on the table to do immediately. Ultimately soon, sure that that cabinet's safe, not because the cabinet's old, but because the ground, because the wires are faulty.
Yeah. I, I don't know of anything off the top of my head. So, but we could, could investigate if there are any potential measures that could be taken to, to kind of minimize that. Yes.
Have we identified that this is an active threat or like the chance like getting struck by lightning? You know what I'm saying?
So I, I can't really speak too much to the probability of things. You know, I would say the chance is there. Having said that, you know, it's been, been installed for 50 years without incident that I'm aware of. So, you know, I can't say that it's going to fail tomorrow. I can't say that it's not going to fail tomorrow, sort of thing. So.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not trying to sort of establish some sort of crisis or alarm or something. There's something we can do, then we should look at it if it.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing something from a previous discussion. Trustee Stokebrand?
Is this the, is that on the northwest corner of the U-Lot? If I'm reading this map correctly.
North.
All the baseball fields.
More in the middle.
One of the dead end streets goes right to it, yeah, to the north.
And is this the one we've been waiting for parts for, for like?
Yeah.
This was years.
Yeah.
That we just opened.
And, and now it's still, you know, last time we checked, it was still 72 weeks out to get that transformer for that unit. So every time we followed up, it was like, it's 40 weeks, it's 60 weeks, it's 72 weeks. So yeah, those sealed transformers are just difficult to get right now. So.
I had a question. So right now on Oakland and Capitol, we don't have LED lights. A resident buried me about the fixtures saying they, the fixtures themselves look like they send a lot of light up instead of just sending light down. And I wondered if those lights have any kind of a reflector on them? Are they, because I think we've, we've heard that our lights are dark. Those, I think they're called acorn or something or chair drop. Do they send light up as well? It looks like.
So just to clarify, when I was talking about the dark sky compliance, that was in relation to the, the post top kind of lantern style fixtures within the residential areas. I, I looked at the product cut sheet information on that existing, their manufacturer is called Hallifane Light Fixtures and didn't see anything immediately visible on those product cut sheets that indicated one way or the other. I do know that you can get those light fixtures with what's called a skirt option. I don't know if you can add that in after the fact, though, and it, like it sounds, it's kind of like a skirt that goes around and points down. But I, I have not really investigated whether those are dark sky compliant or whether they could be converted to.
It's just, it's something that I think, you know, the point about you could get a lot of design questions answered the first year. And that's something that someone mentioned to me that I wonder too, if, if those lights, like if we, if we'd hire that third-party contractor next year to replace all, if we decided we were just going to live with those because we paid for them. We don't want to spend any more money on a new fixture on Capitol or Oakland. Could we just contract with that third-party to do Oakland and Capitol right away next year for the savings there?
Yes. Yep. There, there wouldn't really be any, as far as Capitol and Oakland go, the only improvements that are, were included in the plan was just to do the lamp replacements. So for sure, if, if you're, you know, just trying to make some progress or save, you know, do something.
In addition to the, I think the phase one engineering in year one, you have the engineering, we might be able to add Oakland and Capitol LEDs. Staff supports that.
Yep.
And how fast would something like that? Two weeks?
So the, again, if you'd want to do a trial period, you would probably do that for a little while. So probably, I don't know, you know, a week for each option or whatever you might pick. And then so that, let's say that's four weeks. And then I think they said when I kind of asked, you know, it'd be like four to six weeks sort of timeframe. So pretty short timeline in terms of getting full replacement done for those light fixtures.
The commercial?
Correct. Yeah.
Okay. And then can you tell me a little bit how, what would the transition be like in the residential areas? Especially for like a homeowner and an apartment dweller in terms of. Like a homeowner and apartment dweller in terms of safety? What happens when your streetlights are being replaced?
So that would be one thing that would need to be kind of um, really hashed out during that detailed design phase. Um, it's kind of a couple different ways you could kind of repower these light fixtures, and so. Um. One, you know, if you were to keep the lighting control cabinets in their same spot, you could potentially um. Replace, I'll say from the back end, um, so you kind of pick the lights off as you get closer and closer to the circuit. And then eventually end up back at your home base and then um, make the replacements that way.
I guess my question is, will people be expected to go a few nights with no lights?
So in that approach. The benefit to that would be that it would re minimize the outage periods. The drawback to it is. Um, you know, you wouldn't be able to take advantage of the multiple lighting control cabinets, potentially, you know, reduced wire size, that sort of thing. Um, if you were to want to move lighting control cabinets and kind of rewire everything. Then you're essentially taking. An entire circuit out. And rewiring it. Um, and then it would, you know, you could plan it so that it comes back on, kind of starting from the control panel out. But those far ends of the circuit would be out for. Um, uh, you know, an extended period of time. So that again is something, you know, that can kind of be evaluated depending upon the. What's most important, I guess, um, for the that selection.
So are you recommending then, it looks like. Leave the seven boxes. Seven control box.
So I wouldn't necessarily say that that has to be the um, route to take. I think there is some benefit to. Um. More uh, dispersely locating those. Um, just because it's, you know, I mean, there's some several of the the lighting runs are. Twelve hundred feet until you get to your first light, so you're now paying for, you know, twelve hundred times three plus conduit and all that. Um, so you're paying for, you know, five thousand feet of. Wire. Just to keep a control cabinet in one spot. So I mean, there's definitely benefits to splitting that up a little bit. Um.
The twenty million was keeping them where they are.
That is keeping them where they are, yeah, as as a budgetary basis. Having said that. It's based on the medium voltage trans closures, which are quite a bit more than the. Wistat style cabinets, which is what I would expect if you were to just scrap the. Existing layout and start fresh, you likely go to those kind of Wistat style um, cabinets. And so you could afford a few of those uh, for the price of a one media voltage trans closure.
And so for the public works people going forward. Would it be easier for them? It sounds like you're saying reconfigure the whole thing. Going forward for maintenance.
So I would still, I would still plan to keep the circuit layouts the same, so they'd still. You know, if you have sixteen circuits and circuit one feeds this, two feeds that, we'd still kind of keep that um, the same or very similar. Um. Just from a constructability standpoint. Um. But there may be more cabinets to have to go to for service. I guess we haven't really talked too much about. Um. You know, whether that's a a a big issue or not. I mean, I think. Typically, when you're going to service and outage, you are going to the area anyway, so. Um, you know, if you have to drive to the fire station every time and then drive out to the lighter uh, location or whatever. Um, I'm not, you know, I'd say the biggest thing would be in the future. When this replaced, you know, when another replacement needs to happen, you know, I have to replace cabinets in. X amount of locations as opposed to two locations, uh, but that that would be one of the main things. Um.
Um, the other thing I'm always trying to get my head around was the the pole boxes and the um. The voltage. And the size of the. Poles, it sounds like. It's possible we could get rid of all the pole boxes. If we went with. A pole that you could go into each pole and do.
So there's uh, would plant. Right now, the budgetary number information is based on having pole boxes and kind of, I'll say, two different categories of locations. One location is similar to what you have right now within the system. Um, to provide access points for maintenance and installation. Um, all the newer installations have had pole boxes like on both sides of roadway crossings. Um, because that's a typical uh, failure point and also a point where. Uh, if you're going to add another circuit, you try to extend off of, you know, an intersection location or or whatever, so. That's one of the uh, types of pole boxes. Those are the ones we would be looking to replace. And then the other pole boxes that are included in the um, implementation plan are uh, because of the large wire size. Um, that's within the system. Uh, the concrete direct buried light poles only have so uh, so big of a. A chase, I'll say, within the pole, um, and so we've had concerns as to whether all that wire will uh, fit within those. Uh, light poles, and so the supplementary pole box next to the poles is to provide a a location to kind of consolidate the wiring down. To three wires before bringing it in the pole.
And then I just was wondering when I was going through this. So the biggest costs are the directionally drilled conduit, five million. And then replacing the light pole assemblies. I guess I was shocked that concrete poles from nineteen twenty are like one of the biggest items, but it means install too, right?
Correct. Yep. So the and and I guess just also. In terms from a cost standpoint, um, even if we were to find that uh, light poles are able to be reused. Um, it doesn't mean that it necessarily zeros out that amount associated with. The light pole, so when you do a light pole replacement, there's some benefits to it in terms of like. When you wire that up, you typically would install the light fixture on the pole. You know, run the wire down the pole, so you can do that all at grade. And then you would place the pole in the hole and then and then set it in place. If we're not taking a pole down, we'd still want to replace that wire going up the pole, and you'd still want to replace the light fixture on top. So there it's not quite as um, efficient to do that on an existing pole, so you're you're trading some. Some material savings for that additional labor and time.
And so the the twenty two feet versus the thirteen feet. I mean, I'm just thinking of people who have complained that my the streetlights are coming in my windows. So we currently, because of our old system, we have to have them need to be high.
So um, the existing, the existing system voltage is four hundred and eighty volts to ground. And that's what makes uh, the twenty two foot requirement come into play. With any new voltage configuration. Um. You would have four hundred and eighty volts between phases, but only two hundred and forty volts to ground. And so by changing your system voltage setup. It would allow the thirteen foot poles to stay the way they are. Does that make sense?
So we already have them.
Yeah, so so it as long as the voltage changes to a standard voltage, that twenty two foot requirement won't. Um, come into play for the new in uh, configuration.
And then I was just looking at the. Cost for twenty twenty four, three hundred and ten thousand. Um. That's all engineering.
Correct.
And that would be a lot of in, a lot of it that could be carried forward other phases. We'd have decided on the light, the lamp. Different things that. Would be the same each year, but. Would would this be something we would do a new bid every year?
So that would have to be up to the village to kind of determine um, what the. I guess uh, bidding criteria would be um.
Have we ever done a five year? That unusual.
Um, I I haven't personally um, done one, but I uh. You know, there's definitely been plenty of municipalities or clients where, um, for example, like in uh, the city of Kenosha. Uh, the they're redoing their oops entire twenty second avenue, so there's. Eight phases to that, um, we haven't been hired to do every single one at once. But um, they've continued to uh, hire us to do each phase, so I would say that's not that abnormal.
It's not all one bid.
No, that so that they're kind of doing like one project a year, ki- kind of like um, but what would be done here a little bit, so.
Thank you.
Trustee Arndorfer and then trustee Kudo, please. I mean, uh. First thing.
That's right.
Uh, so just a, you know, the village has been talking about uh, what it would take to become a dark style, dark sky community. Um, just wondering, you know, what that would do to a plan. If if it was something that we wanted to go forward with, move forward with. I know the, you know, it can be sort of difficult to to get that designation, especially for a community that's probably so close to Milwaukee where there is such. Uh, uh, there's a lot of light pollution. Uh, you know, with those investigations and looking into this, uh, becoming part of that um, that uh, dark sky community. How does that push the timeline for this um? For this project, if if any.
Um, I mean, I would say that as far as this project goes, as long as you're, i- if that's a a primary objective. Just making sure that the selections that are made with the product, you know, what the solutions that you're providing. The light fixtures are dark sky compliant, so. As far as residential areas, just select a new fixture that's dark sky compliant. With Oakland Avenue and Capitol Drive, maybe investigate ahead of time before you do anything to those light fixtures, whether you could make them. Dark sky compliant before spending any money, and if you can't. That would probably be the biggest impact change to what's in the lighting replacement plan is um. Identifying what to do with those two main thoroughfare uh, light fixtures.
And do you guys have experience uh, with dark sky? It sounds like you do.
So I have, we we do um, dark sky compliance for light fixture installations um, a lot. A lot of municipalities have, um, you know, no, no glare, zero uplight sort of requirements within their ordinances, so. We adhere to those all the time, um, in terms of um. Looking at an existing uh, municipality and making them completely dark sky compliant, I guess I haven't um. Done that kind of full encompassing one, but fre- you know, frequently we're doing it on individual installations.
Thank you.
Trustee Kudo.
So as we, as we move forward with this, I think one of the really important things for me would be making sure that. Whatever we install or system we go with. Is as easy as humanly possible to work on, not just EPW, but for contractors or folks. Twenty years down the line who are going to come in and do maintenance or updates or whatever. Are there, and I don't need like specific examples, are there examples or are there ways for us to do this that is smart? So that, you know, it right now it seems virtually impossible to work on stuff, it's just buried wire in the ground. Obviously, using conduit, I imagine would life a lot for everybody, but. As we move forward, are there things we should be thinking about or steps that we can proactively take? Make life or not only village staff, but for any contractors. Easier or make these systems more accessible for them?
Um, I mean, as far as the installation within the village, the main things that I would say would be. Uh, throughout the last few projects, the village has been proactively adding in pole boxes. Um, at uh, roadway intersections, and I didn't really cover it in the presentation, but within the report, there's a small write up. Um, about uh, modifying how the wiring is configured. So right now, within the village, if you have a street of lights. Normally, what we would try to do is have kind of two runs of wire and then at intersections is kind of where you'd cross. The existing village system is set up so that it kind of goes um, back and forth, and so you have. Frequent roadway crossings. Which is a challenge from a maintenance standpoint.
Sure.
Um, and troubleshooting, so isolating those roadway crossings to intersections and kind of minimizing those is one thing you can do. Putting pole boxes at that, at those locations and potentially adding in like a slightly larger conduit at those crossings. Um, just to avoid future roadway construction, um, to have to add another circuit or. Um, a cable fails, you gives you some room to pull a new one in, stuff like that. Like you hit the nail on the head in terms of adding conduit will go a long way um, to allow the system to be. Um. Uh, much more maintenance friendly. Um. And then I'm depending upon who you talk to, um. It may be advantageous to uh, reduce the voltage from four hundred and eighty volts down to two hundred and forty volts. Um, in general, uh, most commercial electricians. Uh, work with voltage up to four hundred and eighty volts. I'd say with those medium voltage trans closures, um. Once you get up above four hundred and eighty volts, uh, that there's a lot. Less people who have experience with those medium voltages. Um, so I would say that would be one thing that, uh, you know, you may want to consider is kind of eliminating that higher voltage there just from a. Um, staff uh, hiring standpoint and a a safety standpoint. Um, so.
Is there anything else we can, I mean, as we sort of. Replace and reconstruct. Major arterial streets in the village, are there ways for us to? Sort of combine. This project with that, I mean, I mean, obviously, you'd want to sort of change out the lights when you're changing the street, right? But is there, you know, is there existing sewer runs or what have you that? We could save money through, you know, I don't have to do diagonal. Boring, I'm just trying to think of. Of ways to sort of piggyback some of these things.
So are you, are you saying you'd like to piggyback the lighting work onto another project or the other way around?
I have no idea what I want to piggyback. Um, I just want to know if it's a, if it's an option, if if when we're, you know, when. EPW, like when the, when public works committee is looking at reconstruction, you know, is it like, should? Is there an opportunity to do this? Because we know in five years, we're going to run some wire through a conduit that we put in five years ago, something like that. Just ways to just try to think ahead.
So uh, in terms of the.
If I may. We do currently, all of our street reconstruction and sewer reconstruction does include replacement. To my.
Yes, of the cabling.
That's the our current policy.
Yep.
Well, and so like I. I would guess that he's one twenty twenty five, phase one is sort of has to be lake drive because all things.
So wouldn't necessarily have to be, I mean, I don't know uh, where the that current plan is, but um, I would, you know, as a part of that project. Uh, they would be tasked with figuring out how to maintain power to. Um, all of the lights that are powered out of whatever they're impacting, so. Um, my guess would be they're just going to likely splice underground or replace wire to a pole location. Kind of end at that, um, so you wouldn't necessarily have to, I mean, lights aren't going to be left unpowered. Um, at the end of that project, it just may make it a little easier, but.
Because otherwise, I would say we should do the electric box by bluff. Phase one. But doing the math, you said seventy two months to get.
Yeah. We might be getting a little out of scope and um, I think what will be part of the next steps, and I can. I was going to clarify this with Rebecca, but. Is we have the long range financial plan and which not only talks about um, spending and borrowing. Um, but it also talks about staging projects and how feasible that is, and so that would be kind of an internal process where. Um, I think we would touch on those things.
Yeah, and I guess one uh, quick item to point out, um. Uh, relative to Kathy's comments was um. Originally, when that Lake Bluff cabinet replacement uh, was reviewed. Um. What was trying to be done was to to just. Provide, you know, there was only a certain amount budgeted. And and given the global size of the project, it was, well, we're better off, you know, doing this one replacement. Um, and then we'll figure other things out from there. So that solution was geared around trying to keep the existing infrastructure in service as is. Now that there's more of a global approach to this, it kind of opens up the door for some different options, so that. Cabinet no longer needs to even be there, um, and it definitely doesn't need to be that type, so. It kind of gives you some more flexibility there.
And that would be the design.
Down the timeline, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Uh, trustee Moore Baldoff? Um, well, you kind of addressed what I was going to say, was just that I think this is like a really. Interesting conversation, but that we're probably like getting a little over our skis on it, like we. We need to figure out how quickly we can pay for it first, um, so President McCabe kind of got to my. Question on like next steps and like, when will this come back before the board for action, because I know we're not scheduled for any action tonight. Um, just, you know, receiving the information, so Rebecca, when will we have action?
So in June, we're going to be providing you with the five year, or pardon me, the ten year LRP. Um, within that, you're going to see this project reflected to go to design next year. Um, and then for the next five years, have that construction design phasing, um, go in. And then following that, we'll be back to with an RFP for design.
Fantastic. So that'll give us all time to keep our fingers crossed that some bipartisan infrastructure law money will shake out for this kind of work.
Agreed.
Trustee Stokebrand.
Um, I just wanted to ask, so I noticed the thing in there about, you know, looking for other revenue sources. Is that something like your part is done now, right? This is tonight is, I think it was a thirty-five thousand dollar contract. Come up with this and thank you very much because it finally gives us something to put, you know, start to get our heads around it, which I think our staff is, knows all about it, but. For people like me, it was an excellent overview. Um, but your part is done. Right? And so I'm just wondering typically with things like this would, like in the engineering phase, the next phase. Would, would part of an engineering act include possibly looking? Funding alternatives or is it staff would have to do or how does it?
Um, it's purely a preference thing. Um, so if the staff has available, has availability and knowledge. Uh, with identifying, um, funding sources, they can do it themselves. Typically, the, um. You know, people don't know or care to fill out forms, so, uh, a lot of times we'll take on that, um, responsibility to complete that information. One thing I would say is some of the programs, um, require a significant amount more paperwork. Once you get into construction to show compliance and get the money. Whereas others are fill out this form and submit it and that's it. Um, in terms of all that backend paperwork associated with construction, that typically has to be the municipality. So the village, there, there, depending upon what that that funding is, you know, that I guess that would be one thing to keep in mind is that. There can be a heavy amount of workload on that.
And it, it does sound to trustee Moore Baldoff, I was very fluid right now.
Thank you. All right. Any final comments from staff? If not, oh, trustee Lynn.
I, I have one, one question and forgive me if this is kind of a stupid question, but, um, so. Just in terms of of kind of planning this, because there's so much to think about. I think you've done a good job of laying out where, what we should be thinking about and where we should go with this. Um, and I'm thinking if we're going to be talking about this again in June or something like that. If we're all, you know, on the same page that we want to get rid of the boxes from the seventies that are the medium voltage. And we want to go down to exclusively, um, the WISDOT boxes. That seem to be more manageable, more modern, like lower cost, all of that and safer. Um, is something that we should be talking, should we be talking internally about potential locations for all of these new boxes? Or is that something that we should wait until we have an actual? Should we, should we come to the agreement that we want that and then wait for an engineer to decide that? Or is that something that we should be talking about kind of on an earlier end?
So I would say, uh, in terms of locations, um, I think it, you know, would, um. I don't know if you need to get too detailed into it at this point in time, um, but maybe kind of identify some public spaces or areas where you have an easement. Where you, you know, you, you could accommodate a cabinet and maybe just kind of see like, hey. This entire quadrant, like we have nothing, so it's going to take us X amount of time just to acquire a piece of. Land to locate this thing or or whatever the case might be, or maybe, um, this area is just not going to work. Residents aren't going to want a cabinet in any part of this, you know, that, that might be somewhat beneficial. Because if that's the case across the entire board in the village, well, then you kind of know that. Splitting them out to different areas maybe isn't an option. Um, but other than.
It sounds like that would be part of a design process. It's not something that like the trustees aren't going to go out and.
No, no, no.
So we'll, we'll, we'll probably integrate it. Yeah.
Thank you.
Not that that's.
Want one in your, uh, front yard or?
Yeah, it comes with, it comes with winning an election.
Only decorate. Only if it's.
Your trophy.
Yeah. There's a plaque on it, so.
We, we only need five and I see more than five people here, so.
Good approach. Rick, I appreciate you.
Yeah, thank you.
Excellent. All right. I think we all geeked out on, uh, streetlights.
This was super.
Yeah. Um, am I sensing a biobreak need or we can keep going?
I'm great, but I just got back.
I know.
I think if others are good, we should keep her moving.
I just wanted to check out. Okay.
But if anybody needs a break, then like that's fine too.
Right. All right. So that concludes, um, the special orders of business for this evening. Um, moving back to, I believe it's the consent agendas next. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, motion, um, to approve by trustee Kudo, seconded by, uh, trustee Ursink. Any discussion?
Trustee. Item, uh, B is in Betty and D is David.
All right, any other? Okay, um, then. Uh, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda with the exceptions of five B and five D, um, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Thank you. Uh, motion carries. Item six, items removed from the consent agenda, five B, consider regular village board meeting minutes, April seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, trustee Stokebrand.
I just wanted to make something clear. Uh, I think it was number ten or eleven. Uh, was the item for future consideration about the, um, pedestrian safety. And it reads as though I'm telling the committee to come to the meeting and I'm actually was asking residents to come to the meeting. We could just add that. Or clarify.
Any other changes?
No, I'll move to approve.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay. Motion to approve by trustee Stokebrand, seconded by trustee Lynn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, um, item five D, consider Shorewood Business Improvement District applications for special event permit, temporary cabaret license. And application for class B, class B for the Shorewood Criterion, June twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, trustee Stokebrand.
Yeah, I just, I need to abstain on this because of a potential conflict.
Thank you. All those in favor or is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay.
Um, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
One abstention.
Okay. Uh, motion carries. Public hearings, item seven, we have none this evening. Item eight, citizens to be heard. This is item is for not, items not on the agenda. Are there any citizens who would like to be heard this evening? And raise your hand or come off mute. All right, hearing and seeing none. We will move on to item nine, new business, nine A, consider resolution twenty twenty-three dash ten. A resolution amending the village fee schedule relative to commercial design review. I believe this, did it go through committee or it's just coming here? Okay.
Use the mic if you're going to speak. Thank you.
Did it come through community and business relations? Okay. Uh, Chair Kudo, does there anything that you'd like to share? It's unanimously recommended?
Yeah, no, this is pretty straightforward. Uh, I thought Bart did a really nice job of walking us through. His thoughts on this and and why it's appropriate and I think we agreed and we forwarded it to the board for, for consideration.
All right. Is there anything you'd like to add, Director Gripenjag?
Nothing that's not in the packet. So it was a pretty straightforward discussion like trustee Kudo said, so we'd be creating, uh, fees for planning and design adjustments. Uh, we'd be creating and updating fees for design review levels for commercial projects. And excuse me, and we'd be updating the, uh, the fees associated with parking and signage, special exceptions.
Thank you. I would take a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion to approve by trustee Kudo, seconded by trustee Stokebrand. Any discussion? All those in favor, it'll be a roll call vote. Trustee Kudo.
Yes.
President McCabe.
Aye.
Trustee Lynn.
Aye.
Trustee Arndorfer.
Aye.
Trustee Stokebrand.
Aye.
Trustee Ursink.
Yes.
Trustee Morbaldoff.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. Nine B, consider amendment to Shorewood sex offender residency restriction ordinance to add appeal process. I believe this came to us through, um, public safety. And, uh, Chair Arndorfer, would you like to speak to this? Or if.
Yeah, we had, um, we approved, um, this and the subsequent one. Uh, subsequent item, um, had a good discussion, uh, with the village attorney. And, uh, we did break, uh. This item up into two separate items just based on, uh, some of the different issues involved. Uh, but both items did pass through committee.
Thank you. Attorney Bear.
Thank you. I just wanted to, uh, sort of give the thirty thousand foot view for all those that weren't at the committee hearing, uh, or the committee meeting. So ex- right now Shorewood has an existing ordinance. It's under a four oh nine dash six. And the title of the ordinance is residence, or excuse me, residency of sex offenders loitering in child safety zones. And it essentially does three things. It creates an area where, uh, those that have been convicted of certain, uh, sex offenses. Uh, cannot loiter in an area where it is defined as a child safety zone. Uh, the second thing that it does is, is it prohibits anyone from certain, uh, from having certain convictions and offenses from living within a thousand feet of those child safety zones. And the third thing that it does is it prohibits someone who lives, um. Or excuse me, it prohibits anyone from living in the village of Shorewood unless they lived in the village of Shorewood at the time that they were arrested for their offense. Now, um, these are adopted and I believe all of the Milwaukee County, um. Uh, communities have these, most of the communities around the state have these, most of the communities around the country have these. And, um, over the last ten years, there's been pretty, um, significant challenges to these ordinances. Um, by individuals who have had their residency prohibited or been barred from living in certain areas. And they've challenged them generally in federal court claiming constitutional, uh, um, violations. And have brought them under nineteen eighty, they're basically nineteen eighty-three claims under federal law. And the, the long and short of it is these challenges in federal court have, have led to, um, two things that have been pretty clear from these decisions. First of all, unless there is an appeal process. The courts have said unless that appeal process exists for someone whose residency has been restricted by one of these. Um, it violates due process under the, the United States Constitution. Um, so one of the things that, uh, we've done, uh, that with this is we've created an appeal process. And I'll describe that a little more in detail, um, when we get to, um, we get to that specific ordinance. And the second thing that has been clear from these cases, the courts have said that the original domicile restriction, they've looked at that. And they've said that it's an impermissible ex post facto law and it violates equal protection. And again, that's the original domicile restriction says that unless you were. Living in Shorewood at the time you were arrested for your offense, you can't live in Shorewood at all, even if it's outside the child safety zone area. Just with Shorewood is just off limits to you. And, uh, the, the original case came actually out of the Seventh Circuit. And, um, um, there was kind of in the, in the municipal law, um, world, if you will, that. There was kind of some question as to whether the Seventh Circuit would take that up. Um, we're kind of waiting for the other shoe to drop as some other federal districts around the country had addressed similar things. And there's been a couple of other cases, um, where it's been, um, um, held to, to be, uh, unconstitutional as well. So there's sort of a settled, settled law on that. So what we did is we went back to the drawing board and we added, um, an appeal process. So what it does is, um, if someone is barred from, um. From, from living in the municipality, um, there's an appeal process. And originally we, we did what other municipalities have done, uh, which is send that appeal directly to the governing body. Either the city council or the village board or what have you. Um, we discussed this in committee and, um, uh, the committee decided that, uh, what they would like to see is. Um, that the application would actually come to the public safety committee and they would screen it. And then they would, uh, then pass it along with a recommendation, um, to the full board. And, um, the those ordinance you have in front of you under sub Z. Alists all of the factors that should be evaluated by the board. And these essentially come from the cases that have, uh, addressed due process considerations in these ordinances. Did you consider the nature of the offense? Um, the age of the offense, any recommendation if the individual has probation or parole officer recommendations to the police department? Recommendations to the public safety committee, um, rehabilitation plan and those types of things. So, and this again, these are gleaned from the cases, uh, that we've evaluated through the federal court of appeals. So, um, the reason that these have come piecemeal, if you will, is again, we're recommending two changes. One is the addition of this appeal process. And two is, uh, the elimination of the original domicile restriction. And in my opinion, that will, um. Keep us, uh, safe from, uh, any challenges, uh, that we might have risk of losing in federal court on those two. Based upon the well-established case law. So the other thing that the, the committee did, safety committee did, has asked us to create two separate ordinances. One, so the first one, you're being asked to include the new appeal process. And then the second one, uh, is the elimination of the original domicile restriction. We were asked to, to separate those so they could be discussed and debated separately. So what this really boils down to is we're, we're trying to protect the municipality from challenges. That have occurred in other municipalities where municipalities have been sued under nineteen eighty-three under federal law. And, uh, not only have lost, but have had to pay significant attorney's fees to the prevailing parties in those cases. And, uh, the attorneys that do this type of work for plaintiffs generally submit a bill in the neighborhood of between four hundred and fifty to five hundred and fifty dollars an hour. And they are not shy about documenting, uh, uh, we're putting a lot of time into it. So, um, you know, ultimately at the end of the day, when these, when these go to trial and or or these, these are, are, uh, litigated in federal court. If the, uh, the striking down of the ordinance, uh, is, is, is only the beginning of it, there's usually attorney's fees attached to it. So we're trying to stay ahead of the curve here. Um, we still have in place, uh, very significant protections with, uh, uh, safety area of a thousand feet. All, all around these child safety zones and, um, no one can live in that area. Uh, and no one can loiter in that area. What we're doing is we're just, um, adapting to what courts have said is unconstitutional in these provisions around the country. So that's why we've made these recommendations and that's why they're in two separate, um, two separate ordinances.
Thank you. I appreciate that thoughtful approach. Um, at this time, yes?
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
Um, for attorney buyer, so, um, have any other, to your knowledge, municipalities in Wisconsin? Uh, repealed their original domicile restriction at this time?
Uh, yeah, I think, um, I did a little search, I think. Just out of curiosity, I was curious about that myself and I popped, there was popped up some news articles and things where municipalities have been. Sort of changing these and, and adapting to the court, the court decisions that have been coming out. Um, I, I, with respect to specifically the original domicile restriction. I. Think there was a couple in Waukesha County that did it. Uh, there was a couple that I saw that were up north. Um, and you, because usually what happens is they don't get changed until after you get sued.
Right.
Um, but you know, here's the other thing too, is a lot of times people think, well, if it's on the books, but we don't enforce it. We, you know, well, let's just leave it there and then we'll just, you know, if we get sued, we'll, we'll take it off. But the problem with that is even if you don't enforce it against somebody, you can get sued and they can argue that there's a chilling effect because it's still on the books and it precluded somebody from seeking residency. And, uh, in these cases, even when, um, municipalities have quickly moved to changed upon, changed the ordinances upon being sued. And in these cases, even when municipalities have quickly moved to change upon, changed the ordinances upon being sued, they pushed, you know, the other side still pushes forward, taking attorney's fees and all those other remedies. So yeah, I think that some communities have tried to be ahead of the curve like Shorewood here, like we've tried to be. Some have just let it lie and cross their fingers that they don't get sued. And so it's kind of all over the board.
And I mean, I would assume based on the size of Shorewood, you know, that we are geographically so small and that restriction of people living within 1,000 feet of child safety zones. I assume child safety zones includes like schools, daycares, libraries, places like that. I would assume there are very few residences available that fall outside of that. Yeah, so I guess I'm just trying to, you know, kind of think through this. I'm, you know, obviously this is something nobody wants to talk about because everybody's concerned about safety and rightfully so. But you know, I'm very supportive of the appeal process. You know, there are people who, you know, are on a sex offender registry for like public urination when they were 18 years old. And now they're 45 with kids. And you know, people who end up on the registry are not always the worst, most heinous offenders. It is so often people who can't afford representation and they take a plea deal because they don't want to spend time in jail. So they say, I'll go on the registry, not realizing how much it's going to impact their lives. So you know, I think this is, you know, frankly, you know, an equity issue too, like, you know, there. And then people have to have a place to live and it's safer to know where offenders are and not have them pushed, you know, out of housing. So you know, obviously, nobody wants to think about having sex offenders live in their community. But the fact is that there are going to be people who have to, people have to live in communities. And you know, being as safe as we can be and respecting their rights too is, you know, is important.
Thank you.
And also like people to be, you know, in my experience, like working with Milwaukee County, this came up quite a bit when people would, you know, call county executive's office to say like, there's a sex offender moving in by my house. How do I stop them? And you know, people need to be with family and in a supportive environment. It makes them less likely to reoffend and that's across the board. So you know, I would, I would hate to think that someone who needed support to actually be safer, you know, like from their family, wasn't going to have the opportunity to get that. So I just wanted to say that.
Appreciate it. I have some history of when we took this up in committee originally, but I'll hold it because I think Trustee Kudo had a comment.
I'm just wondering of the other municipalities in Milwaukee County, how many of them have an original domicile? And then second part of that question would be of those, have any of them?
Brown Deer has removed theirs. Glendale's in the process of removing theirs. I looked, it's still on the books. It's still, it's still there in Milwaukee. My understanding, I tried to reach out to somebody there and I think my understanding is they've given, they've rendered the opinion that it's unenforceable and that that they're not enforcing it, but it's technically still on the book. You know, I, the community that got sued was Pleasant Prairie. That's obviously, you know, I mean, they changed theirs and I think some of the other communities around there all had sued because they saw what was going on. But yeah, it's, it's one of those things where, you know, if you look through, you know, a community that has a lot of, you know, Milwaukee's municipal code is pretty large. It's not quite as large as ours is, but you know, if you look through the, or even if you look through the state statutes, there's all kinds of stuff that probably should get cleaned up, but you know, doesn't. So just because it's on the books doesn't necessarily mean that they're, that, you know, it's being enforced.
Good. Thank you.
I have one other question. Is it also the case that that the state could bypass that anyway? Or no, you know, like if somebody, because like if somebody's coming out of incarceration and part of that, you know, their discharge includes, you know, reintegration planning and a safety plan and all those things. Like I've seen situations arise where it's like, well, the person's got to go somewhere. And this community doesn't want them and this community doesn't want to get, want them. And they all say like, well, we have an ordinance about this, but the state's got to place them somewhere, right?
Yeah, I mean, there has been, there have been some, you know, push and pull over, over exactly that. In fact, that to give you a little more of a background on this, the League of Wisconsin Municipalities and a lot of, you know, the municipalities, especially in Milwaukee County, went to the legislature and just said, look, why don't you make something uniform across the entire state? Because the problem you run into is if one community has a certain foot restriction around their safety zones, another one has a different foot restriction. You know, 90% of one community is eliminated, but 40% of the other community is only eliminated because there's, they're geographically larger with more spread out, you know, safety zones. Then the individuals are going to naturally be placed in one instead of another. So it's sort of a race to, you know, make sure that, you know, they're, they're not unduly, you know, one community is not more unduly burdened than the other. And they said to the legislature, why don't you just fix this and make a uniform thing across the state? And everybody can live with that and it'll be, everybody will understand the rules. And they punted basically. There's a special rule with respect to a certain type of sexual offender that's been designated as a violent offender under a very specific statute. And there's a teeny, teeny tiny percentage of offenders that actually fit into that category. If they fit into that category, then there's a state statute that supersedes or applies. But they didn't do anything for most of the offenders. So unfortunately, local communities are muddying their way through and doing the best they can to, you know, stay on the right side of the constitutional protections as been defined by the federal courts. And you know, so if, if you know anybody in the legislature that you can encourage to take this up, it would take the burden off the local municipalities, but unfortunately, to date, that really hasn't, hasn't happened.
Don't think any of the people in the driver's seat there would listen to me, otherwise I'd try.
Trustee Stokbrand?
Are you ready to entertain a motion?
If you, if I may, I'll just share the historical context. So this came to JP and L in 2013 or 2014. And I think it was because Whitefish Bay passed theirs. I believe Milwaukee already had theirs, but it was brought up that Shorewood was a bit of an island or an outlier. So we took it up and I just wanted to say, we brought up the idea of the constitutionality of the original domicile. And we also took up the, the foot requirement, you know, the distance. And we could have, because of the size of Shorewood, if we had adopted the distance of neighboring municipalities, we would have eliminated probably 80% of our real estate. And so the committee didn't think that was fair. And so we intentionally chose a more narrow footprint requirement. And then we did talk about the original domicile, but at that time, there weren't any cases. And so we decided to go with just being consistent with the municipalities around us for not, you know, basically for safety, which I'm not, you know, just staying kind of in keeping with our peers, you know, not 100% proud of that. So I'm actually very happy that this is coming to us because that did bother me. But I did just want to say that the previous board did take care to not be overly harsh and restrictive.
And with that, the other thing you should know too, is that we, we took a lot of care on determining where that line was going to be. Because the other communities that have gotten sued is when they, you know, that say it's a smaller community like Shorewood, is they just said, well, okay, we're going to make the distance restriction, we'll just say 4,000 feet. And then when you geographically work the number out, like there's a couple of courts, the court decisions talking about how there was 2% of a municipality left. And there was no residential, and the 2%, there was no actual residential place on that parcel. It was industrial or something. So the other area where the courts have said, you can't do this is if you eliminate the entire community. And so we feel good about the 1,000 feet rule based upon, and the percentage that's left, it's not, I think it's only in the teens or twenties, but when you run it, but, but there's, you know, there is actual spots where, you know, you could, so I don't, I'm not concerned about the constitutional issues associated with the distance. I think we got that right. But the, these two issues have just evolved in the last 10 years or eight years or so. And, and these are the latest developments. We're just trying to stay ahead of the curve.
Thank you. Trustee Stokbrand, did you want to make a motion?
I move to approve ordinance 3055, an ordinance repealing the original domicile restriction contained in 409-6B5 of the Village Shorewood Municipal Code.
It's actually, that's the second one, but.
I thought, did you want to go in order?
Yeah, I didn't know if, do we have to go in order?
I mean, I guess.
Numerical or agenda order?
As long as, I mean, we've discussed them collectively. Like I said, I broke them up at the, at the request of the committee so that they could be addressed and voted on separately. So however the body wants to take them is.
If there's no objection from the body, then I'll ask for a second to that motion.
I'll second it.
All right. Motion by Trustee Stokbrand, seconded by Trustee Morbaldoff. Any further discussion?
This is just the ordinance number 3055, original domicile restriction.
All right, this will be a roll call vote.
Trustee Lynn?
Aye.
Trustee Arndorfer?
Aye.
Trustee Kudo?
No.
President McCaig?
Aye.
Trustee Morbaldoff?
Yes.
Trustee Stokbrand?
Aye.
Trustee Ursink?
No.
Motion carries five two.
All right. Do we have a motion for the other? Yes.
I move approval of ordinance 3056, an ordinance establishing, establishing an appeal process associated with residency restrictions as set forth in 409 six, residency of sex offenders loitering in child safety zones.
Okay.
Motion by Trustee Stokbrand, seconded by Trustee Kudo. Any discussion? Hearing none, this will be a roll call vote.
Trustee Stokbrand?
Aye.
Trustee Arndorfer?
Aye.
Trustee Kudo?
Aye.
Trustee Lynn?
Aye.
Trustee Ursink?
Aye.
President McCaig?
Aye.
Trustee Morbaldoff?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item of new business, Consider 2023 Community Survey Questions and Content. This item was discussed previously in committee and we provided feedback and direction to staff. And so it's coming back before us in a revised form. And with an update on progress with the plan, implementation plan. There's a memo and a revised copy draft in our, final draft in our packet. At this time, Assistant Village Manager Anderson is available for questions, if there are questions at this time. Trustee Stokbrand?
I'm just looking through and read the following services, number six. I'm wondering about possibly adding beach. I see parks listed.
Any discussion from?
No, I understand as the year's asked, it's not been there before and I, I see the merit in having it consistent, you know? Such a, a large part of our community.
Would you want beach separate or park slash beach? I mean, that would be.
I think it's more meaningful if it's separate.
I support that. I support that.
So do I.
The motion?
It could be in the motion. I don't think we need a motion, in case there are other requests. We'll just take one motion with all the changes. Yes, Trustee Kudo?
Two things. One, I want to say thank you to Assistant Village Manager Anderson for the demographic changes to the demographic questions. I appreciate that. Question six, infrastructure and public spaces question. I know we talked a little bit about this last time. Is there a way to, just the wording of this question and the two options really seems to facilitate or suggest an answer? Is there a way we can wordsmith this one a little bit more? I mean, remain at the existing site with reduced level of services? There's no sort of context with that. There's no, you know, like stay the same but lose or move and win. So it's sort of predetermined as an answer.
The reason that we had that sort of red line and in an effort to keep that question on there, this question was asked previously in a different survey poll that we sent out. So that was really the motivation behind just trying to mirror the language that we'd used before. I know before it was very wordy and confusing. We had those TBDs listed. So that was the reason for paring it down that way.
I mean, I just have a, I just have a problem with the, with the wording, frankly. I mean, I know I saw it on a pre-existing survey, didn't love it then, don't love it now. And would be happy to write a wordsmith it with you or the chair of the committee. But right now, it seems like we're suggesting an answer, which sort of defeats the purpose of the survey.
I understand.
So a question about that. So reduce levels of service could be, for example, instead of getting yard waste pickup every 10 days, we'd get it every two weeks. What we mean by this? I mean, it's not that the service would necessarily be cut. It's just that instead of, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, maybe we could, maybe a compromise would be with a change in, in service.
I mean, there, you know, there are, I don't want to relitigate the whole thing.
Me neither.
Obviously.
Because a lot of it too could be, well, it depends on what it would cost, right? Or how much more time it would be between pickups. I mean, there's just, you know.
It seems like if we want a clean answer, we've got to ask the right question. For me, just for me personally.
Do we need it on here?
Nope, I don't think we do.
Then we would have, okay, let's see.
No, I'm open to what everybody else thinks here about this particular question. I mean, I think it's, I think it's, I think it's an important question. I mean, we've, we've gone to survey, we've gotten results from a survey already. I mean, so I mean, in that regard, maybe it's more redundant, but at the same time, we're constantly looking for the feedback of the village in every possible avenue. And I think this is another opportunity to get more feedback on this particular issue, which could be a very big sort of topic for our communities. So I mean, I do like the question in here. I feel like it's a valuable question. And I, you know, would love to get more feedback from, from, from the residents. But if we need to go back and rework this question a little bit, then I, I'm open to that.
If by reworking the question, we're talking about getting it squared away by this evening, is that right? Just to make sure we stay on the schedule that's proposed?
Yeah. I mean, if, yes, I mean, if that's, if that's the will of the board and I think we should wrap that up tonight though. I think this is, I don't think we should go back to a committee for this. I think we should, we should figure this out tonight.
I agree with Trustee Urs. Close, but I think it's important.
And is it the reduced, so, okay, so given the information, I think the future public works facility should.
Fine. Trustee Morbaldoff had her hand up, so I might just tap in and then we can come back to where you're at.
I was just going to say.
Because I like where you're going.
I wonder if some of this could be addressed in kind of the intro to the question. You know, because it's like in November 2022, blah, blah, blah. Their findings, because this sentence is also a little clunky to me. Their findings showed, given the space needs and to maintain service levels, rough use and yard waste collections are the major determining factors for future planning of a public works facility. Could that be something like? refuse and yard waste collections are the major determining factors for future planning of a public works facility. Could that be something like their findings showed the current space? You know, the current site, um, does not have the space to maintain current service levels. This mic almost works too well. You know, something to maybe kind of like lay it out there a little bit more. And then the question options could be, given this information, I think they should remain at the existing site with the potential for service impacts. That we were not saying like, it's definitely a cut, but you know, just like letting people know like, hey, things might change.
Yeah.
Things would change if we maybe just kind of like spell it out a little bit more clearly in the intro and then keep the options simple. And say like, potential for impacted levels of service.
Things will change though, if we stay at that site.
Yeah.
That, that's like, uh, it's not a maybe we'll change. It's like, definitely will change if we stay at that site.
Yeah. I also don't.
Yeah, that's true.
People.
It's definitive. It's clear, the clearly definitive that we are going to, there is going to be services that will be changed if we stay at this site.
Or there will be cost differentials or something. There's considerable policy impact.
Too hard to put into it. It's so complicated.
It is, it is complicated, you know, so.
I know it is.
But I value the input too. I, I don't.
Could, could we just replace the word reduced, um, to say remain at the existing site with changes to levels of service? Just replace reduced to changes to. I think it's important that our community knows that they're going to get reduced levels of services. Change of services doesn't really have the same sort of impact.
Still don't know.
Trustee, yeah, if you could describe what your concern is.
My concern is that it's not, as a survey question, you want to, you know, you want to give the information. And then get a clear and consistent. This way it's worded, the paragraph. Information, the paragraph, like you said, it's a little muddled, a little muddy for me. You know, if we were to strive, but trustee, there's things. If, if we stay, there will be changes to level, level of service. If we go somewhere else, you know, there, again, there's no guarantee that it's a renewed level of service. It's going to change no matter. But the way that this is written is paragraphs, a little confusing way it's written is, do you want to stay at the current DPW site with reduced level of service? Or, and like I just, we can't tell folks what those services are. They don't know, you know, is it trash pickup every 10 days versus every set? Like, I don't know what they are. I don't know that we know. And so it's, what this is doing is.
Yeah, I know.
Suggesting. You know what I mean?
People could make it on, they could make an inaccurate inference.
And I, you know, there, there, you know, as much as I want to hear from as many residents as possible on this, this might be a little too, this might be a little too much for the rest, like for this survey, for the residents, I, you know, I, it just might be a little too. It's, it's, it's very complicated, you know, and it's.
Trustee Arndorfer has his hand up.
Yeah, I guess just a couple of things. Um, I mean, I, I generally find myself agreeing with trustee Kudo on this. Um, I mean, I, I think that there are some options that are not even on the table here, you know, do we have a split site? Is that, I mean, that's an option that, I mean, if I'm reading it correctly, is not really included here. Um, I mean, do we want to? And I, I understand that it's complicated, but I, I would be interested in getting, uh, you know, a, a sense from the community on this. I mean, I'm wondering, do we? Is there a different way to get after this, which frankly, I don't know that we can necessarily solve tonight, unfortunately. Um, I mean, do we want to present um, residents with a binary choice, or do we want to kind of lay out some of the considerations that we're looking at or things that are, you know, what are, what are priorities for this site?
Yeah, maybe we could.
And, you know, there's just, and we, you know, we just, I mean, I think the question of cost has to come into it at some point somehow, because otherwise it, we're not really, and I, I know we don't know, but residents need to know it's a consideration. Sorry.
What's the, what's the question of cost? What, what do you mean by that?
Trustee Arndorfer.
If it's going on, you know, like any, you know, if we are doing a site, you know, doing a site in Milwaukee could involve some remediation costs that we do not, you know, that we do not have a full handle on. That's true for this or would say as well, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It is. So trustee Arndorfer, just to be clear, is it the cost related to the project overall, whether it's on this site or a different site? Or is it like cost of services? Depending on which site it's at?
I just think that there are more variables at play here, um, than we are presenting in this question. And I, I get that it's a complicated question, which is why I'm just wondering if there's a different way to get at. What we're trying to find out is actually important to residents here.
Yeah. I, I'm just want to pick up on what you said about, you know, maybe it's not presented as a binary. Maybe it's an open ended question. It's a, a, a field that they could fill in similar, because I think our survey that circulated previously did have open ended questions. It had like, because we got a lot of feedback narrative back.
Additional comments, that's right.
Yeah. So maybe that's what we want to do is present that this is.
I don't think we're going to get as enough feedback like that. I still feel like people are, are going to just skip that over, you know, whereas I, I think people would be inclined to click something. You know, we get more feedback if people could just click something to move, move on than, than have to give feedback for something. People would probably skip a lot more people would skip over that question in my mind.
Trustee Lynn.
Could we remove the question with binary choice and, and have it instead? Read the first part of the, the introduction and then the first sentence in November, 2022, da, 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 conceptual plan for an improved facility and then go and ask. As a resident, you know, can you list what you feel are the most important services to you in an open field box and let people just say what it is that they like, what the services that they like and they value are? You know, I know, real quick, I would just go, you know, regular garbage pickup, regular recycling pickup, you know, leaf collection, you know, stick collection, things like that. I would right away just fire those things off and then I could just move on to the next question. You know, could we, if we, if we ask people to just list the, the services that they want the most or that they like or appreciate the most and leave it open ended? Could we take that information? Would people be okay with that? You know, I kind of thought of something similar. Maybe if we make it, I hate to say it, but less about the site and more about the services, that might be an easier, you know, an easier way to digest this a little bit.
But you're already saying the things that are important. Maintain service levels, refuse and yard waste. That's already in there.
Right. But instead of having people have to decide if we move or stay or split a site, maybe it's more about what service, do they want to maintain service levels? Do they want to, are they willing to cut service levels?
That's.
I was saying.
That's ultimately the question is, is what, you know, is a pain point or a price point or whatever? What are folks willing to put up with or what services exactly are they looking for? And so I think it's a really good idea is it may be, you know, they're, this is mailed and available online.
Available online and then hard copy as well. Either here at library and village.
Yeah. I mean, it's regardless of what we do, right? It's going to be, you're going to have a regular levels. Whether it's two weeks, whether it's two weeks for garbage or a week for garbage or whatever. It's like, we just need to figure out what, what that means, you know? I mean, it's longer duration between garbage pickup, longer duration between recycling pickups. You know, less opportunity for leaf collection, like what?
Is that, what would be a good word? What would be a good word to summarize that reduced or? Well, no, no, but what, what I'm saying is, I think we should, I think we can eliminate the sentence that says their findings show da, 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 da. And then I think for this stage, given that this is part of a broad survey covering a ton of stuff, I think we can just ask, what are the services that you like and have people just tell us basic information? If we want to do a specific survey that says, do you care about weekly versus bi-weekly garbage pickup? Do you care who picks up your leaves or if you have to have them bagged? Like those are all such small, specific questions. I mean, do we even know if people want to know about that stuff or people have opinions about that? I think we should start with a more broad, you know?
Yeah.
Keep this question broad. And if we want to do a second survey just about the DBW facility, I think we could include a ton of questions that are more specific. I, I'm close to that, but I am still, it still feels like you're get, you know, the, the audience here or our residents know about our services, which I still, I don't think they understand the impacts of a lot of that, you know, and, and they don't understand all of the services and what we do. There's still people that don't know that waste management does our recycling and we do the garbage pickup. So I think to, to, to give people that open up, open ending question, there'd have to be a certain level of education within the community that goes deeper than, you know?
I don't disagree with that though. I think it's like, could we list maybe not everything, but some of the things like, here's what you currently get. Do you like this or not? Right? Like.
Would you be willing to drive to Milwaukee or their transfer, be at our transfer station there? Take your dump, your stuff that you would normally take to the dump in Sherwood.
Like your electronics or your.
Milwaukee is a large area.
Well, we can, we can specify.
One to two miles away.
That's fine.
Like, are we going to River West?
For the Saturday.
No, I mean, I'm just, yeah, one, one to two miles is perfectly fine with me, but it's like, if we're going to, if we're going to give options, let's give them all. Not necessarily in this survey, but that, that would be a change to, that would be a reduction of service in some people's minds, that there isn't a refuse facility in the village where they can take a couch ever. So let's put it on there and see. But again, I, I agree with you that.
I agree.
Perhaps this could be a blanket. What do you like? Do you like having a dump in Shorewood or do you not care? Do you like having your stuff? You know, what do you care about? And then somewhere down the road, dig deeper. You need to additional.
Well, don't, the, the one thing that I, if I may, um, I don't mind approaching it that way as long as it's accurate based on the findings that we have. So for example, the only way to keep a dump in Sherwood is to keep the transfer here and move operations someplace else. So then it's a split site.
What are the only way to keep a dump?
The transfer station.
Transfer station. Okay. So that is. So that's, if that's people's priority, then that's good information for the board to have. But that's what's accurate. You know what I'm saying? Like.
So are you going to say then, do you care if waste management, your garbage besides your recycling? Do you care?
Right? I don't know. I mean, we did ask, so one, what I go back to is we did put out an electronic survey on this, um, topic. And so I'm wondering if we could just repeat.
In the last year.
Yeah. After the community forum, wasn't it?
But those were all words like this, where it was sort of like a loaded question.
Okay. I don't mind.
But I think.
I understand that I hear you don't want to ask loaded questions. Fine. But we are staying here tonight until you figure out what question you do want to ask, because we've had a couple of weeks now. So.
Do you want to make it a blank? Are you open to having the public works site moved out of the village?
Or with even one to two miles.
Without any word about reducing anything about, without anything about service levels. Just are you interested in moving?
Ask a general question. What are we hoping to get out? What information do we want to gain this? That will tell us.
Since this has been, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Since again, we'd asked this question once before, I thought it was going to be a good opportunity to get this out to a larger, um, population of folks that may not follow the village managers memo. Um, again, this is.
Are you suggesting perhaps that no one, that not everyone reads them?
They do.
Don't you tell?
It was a great response.
Thank you, trustee Kudo.
So, right. Just an effort to take a question that we've used previously and amplify it.
Okay.
There's just so much nuance here that it's, it's just so complicated because, you know, there, there's just, with, with every decision somebody makes, there's also something, there's an effect, there's a cause and effect to everything here, you know? So while somebody could say, well, I want to keep my dump here, or I don't care if waste management picks up my trash. The implications of that are, are much bigger than I think the, the, the audience that are, you know, answering these questions realize, right? So if they don't care about waste management, you know, um, picking up their trash, do they understand that they're going to have a loss of, of employee, that we're going to have to lay off employees potentially in Sherwood? So there's just nuances.
In context, I mean, you just, you're putting stuff in front of people with no context.
Yeah. I mean, there's just, this is just a very.
That's why the TBD was a problem and we still don't have the answers like the, the, you know, I have never seen results of, I'd like to know, are they on the website? The results.
They are.
But then.
I can, I'll, I'll, I'll give them to you.
We'll fill in the website.
I guess it goes back to trustee Lynn's position of ask these, you know, broad questions, or maybe you number them. Here are the, if, if here are the six services, number them in order of importance. And that would at least give us an, I mean, it'd be. And then do another survey.
But it's sort of like compared to what?
Exactly.
Like I love my weekly trash pickup, but what's option B? Is, is it every 10 days? And I mean, honestly, we could do, we're not, you know?
But then, but then the flip being, but President McCag suggested beginning, which is we need to ask the question. We have so many variables that still exist.
We don't.
So much of this stuff. Can we realistically put together a question and response? With all those variables out there that will give us any bit of.
That's actually feasible too. That doesn't contradict what we already know for sure.
There is a question here that says, please rate your satisfaction with the following services and it's all of our services. So like, I mean.
Right. Number one, right?
Maybe we dump it.
Yeah. So we could lose it.
Maybe we dump it.
Okay.
And just my, my last thing is, is kind of like what, what you had said, just picking off of, you know, what is it? We want to know. And, and for me, what I want to know is what services do people care about? So if we, to me, that is, is what I want to get from the public.
So do you want to make several bullet points for recycling, leaf collection, garbage?
No, I don't think we can. I think for two reasons. Number one, I don't think we even know what bullet points we want to put down. And number two, we need to get out of this meeting tonight with everything else on this list that is just fine. So I think to focus our thought process on this, I think either we eliminate the question and add an either an open ended question that just asks people to just list some information and we take what we get and we use, use that as a starting point, or we don't ask that question at all, and we just go off of the other service question that we already have.
I might have a really good fourth option.
Okay.
Maybe what we're wondering is how aware are people that we are, um, engaging this discussion? And so we could frame it, um, with the way that it is. Um, I've now lost my place. And then say, um, you know, the first two sentences. And then instead of the questions that are there, say, are you aware of this?
Project?
Project, yes or no? And that would tell us, and then for more information, go to, we could give, because it does have a webpage. So, and it could be hyperlinked and they could go right there. Um, and so we're just drawing out, are people aware of this project? This decision or whatever we want to call it.
That would be, that would be valuable information.
And if the answer is no, then we know we need to do some more. We get to decide if we want to invest dollars in more outreach. And if we think, you know, if, if it's yes, then.
Yeah. Because I, I, I loved it. I, I think we are going to get a snapshot of what services people value in question six in that, uh, in perception. That, you know, perception that question number one, perception, uh, bullet point six, you're going to have the service level questions there. And then to get people to see how many people fill out this survey and if they've heard about this project or not, that's going to be valuable information. Instead of just cutting it out completely, it'd be at least nice to know if people are following and if people know.
Now, are you aware of the four options currently on the table? Or what are we calling them?
Well, I don't even know.
Process.
Because.
Yeah. I would just say, are you aware of the, of the project that the, you know, village board is exploring relating to the DPW site? And then, like you said, link it to the page that tells what the options. And then, like you said, link it to the page that tells what the options are and what all that information is. I don't think you need to include all that in the survey. If we include the link and just the general question, I'd be okay with that. Knowing we have the other sense question.
I'll have to check. I'll have to check if there's an option to include links within the survey, because again, I don't want to distract somebody from trying to complete it.
Yeah, and I don't think that that's really important because.
But, but to cap, but to capture that, if somebody does say no, I think if I can add maybe a section to opt in to receive information, please include your email for.
Great idea.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, so I'll do that. And then, so I would have that, and then we would have our open comment field as the third question.
Three question, it's a yes or no, and then if no, would you like to receive?
Perfect.
Or just either way, would you like to receive? Because some people might be aware and also still want to receive.
Sure.
Not if, as opposed to if no.
Trustee Kudo?
I have no comment. I think we should. I like it.
With the yes, no question, do you know about it? And then
Yes, no.
Eliminate the section and, and how far down do we delete under number six? Do we keep the first sentence?
They keep it as is. I mean, get more information.
Include, include the they're finding sentence? So all the way down to number?
Somebody wants to wordsmith it now. Cause it's, it's the, it was their finding.
I don't, I mean, I'm, I'm not.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's just, it's a difficult.
It was.
Yeah, I think that's, I.
I don't mind if you want to rewrite the sentence. So trustee more baldaf, I think you had some ideas.
Maybe their findings showed the current space is insufficient to maintain current service levels. And then end of sentence, and then refuse and yard waste collections are the major determining factors for future planning.
I think reducing ser, at current service levels, is that what you?
Or ma- maintain current service levels at current costs?
I think I'd end it after facility and are you aware of the?
Yeah, we got some good writers here, so let's hammer it out.
End it right after an, an improved facility.
I mean, it's nice to show what they're finding. I find what I just bought.
Oh, yeah, we got to include, I would.
I don't know why we leave their, leave their findings out.
Yeah, especially since we're referencing it. We're saying like, they conducted a needs assessment. So I think we should say what they found.
May I repeat what I have just to make sure I'm tracking? I know I've heard people type it too, but their findings showed given the space needs and to maintain service levels, the current space.
No, just leave it maintain service level.
Oh, excuse me.
Yard waste collections are major factors for determining, yeah, just leave it all. The second sentence ends in facility too. I'm sorry, that's what.
Oh, sorry.
And so then just say, are you aware of this discussion? Are you aware of the process?
The current space is insufficient to maintain.
I wouldn't put that, I wouldn't put. Just leave the way that, that folded sentence start in November 2022. The second sentence ends in facility and then put your question.
So you want to keep their findings showed given this base needs and to maintain service levels? I just think that's a clunky sentence.
It is.
So what if we said it like this? Their findings showed the current space is insufficient to maintain current service levels.
Do that.
Refuse and yard waste collection are the major determining factors for future planning of the facility? And then go, are you aware that the village board is exploring options for replacing the DPW facility?
I, yeah.
I said replacing because that could mean both. But I, I'm open to other words for, for.
I'm fine with that. I mean, that's how I wanted to start that sentence.
Should we say updating?
Is it replace and or relocate?
I mean, if you say replace, people just think you.
Yeah, let's go. Replace and or relocate, because that implies a split, that implies, you know, replace it on the current.
So the village board is exploring options for replacing and or relocating the DPW facility.
Yep.
And you could definitely add within one, because I don't want people to feel like.
Or relocating.
Can we, can we?
Within, within one to two miles.
Of current location.
Okay. So let me let me, okay. So I would have the first sentence, so we, we get down through November 2022 sentence. Just to reiterate this part again, their findings showed the current space is insufficient to maintain current service levels. What if I say the current facility instead of space? Is that fine or?
Sure.
I think space is also.
The current space and facility?
Current operations? Current service levels?
Okay, so their findings showed the current space and facility is insufficient to maintain current service levels.
Maintain service levels.
But, but we're still doing it there.
I said to maintain current service levels.
We can stay where we are and we can still do what we're doing, but it's not a good site for our employees.
But so, which means that we can't do it. I mean, you know, so their findings showed that the current, their findings showed the current space and facility is insufficient to maintain current service levels. Refuse and yard waste collection are the major determining factors for future planning of the facility. Are you aware that the village board is exploring options for replacing and or relocating within one to two miles, the DPW facility?
Yeah. I, the only thing I would do is just swap out one of the currents. Is there another word we could use? I mean, just so it's not like the current.
To say current service levels, I guess you could just say maintain service levels.
To maintain service levels, okay.
Do you want to read it back or?
I don't have it. He's typing faster than I can write, so thank you, trustee Lynn.
That's awesome. Thank you for doing that. That's what we.
Okay, so we have all of in, in November 22, their findings showed oh, the current space and facility is insufficient to maintain service levels. Refuse and yard waste collection are the major determining factors for future planning of the facility. Are you aware that the village board is exploring options for replacing and or relocating within one to two miles, the DPW facility?
Yes or no?
Would you like to opt in?
Would you like to get?
Yep.
Opt in for more?
Thank you for tagging that.
Okay, show of hands?
I'm good on that one.
Hold on, hold on, show of hands, are we all there?
Nope.
Okay.
We can stay where we are.
No, we can't. We've had reports that say it's, it's impossible.
But we're doing it next week.
Yeah, just.
I mean, it's, 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 it's a safety hazard.
So it's six, one consensus. Next item on this.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I just didn't listen.
Oh, yeah, it wasn't a vote. Oh, it wasn't a vote. It was just for this, for this discussion item.
Question two. As, again. Parking questions, question two. There was a move made, not a move, there was a, an ordinance change made by a previous board that reduced the amount of parking spaces per unit from point to one to one, which has led to more street parking for new units. I'd like to add something that 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 happened to this question. Monthly overnight on street parking permit, there's a limit of two permits per household address. And the village, you know, reduced the number of required off-street park spaces from 1.7 per unit to
Or new.
For new construction.
With the, sorry.
I was gonna say, I'm just curious, don't, do we, are we going to get some of that information in the answers here? Does it, do we need to, I mean, do we necessarily need, I know, I know where you're going with this and I know, I know the, like, the concept behind what you're trying to say here, but won't we get those answers in, in some of this, in some of this here? Like, how convenient is it to find parking?
I would bet you that 95%.
But I, but at the same time, do people really understand what, what 1.7 versus one is?
I guess pretty forward. I added.
Yeah, I, um, really quickly, I'm sorry that I didn't preface. At the meeting on April 3rd, and when we were having a lot of additions at the cow, I did hear you all. I, I hope that the absence of the inclusion isn't taken that I just wasn't listening to you. What we ended up doing after the April 3rd meeting, went back to the drawing board and I looked at some of the policy driven questions that we had existing that were in there before we even received feedback from the board. And in an effort to make sure to streamline and not have these really lengthy questions that were confusing, the policy related questions were just left. We knew that there was value already in the bench parking question. So that's why we really left a lot of those in there. So I should have said that to begin with, that we didn't have that in there for, for that reason.
No, but I think it's, I think it's easy to add it while still, I mean, we don't need to go specifically with numbers. We know that by reducing the number of off-street parking permits, more people are going to park on the streets. We don't need to.
We don't, though.
Of course, of course, we, there's no way.
We don't have data to support that, trustee Kudo. I have to, I'm sorry, I was going to try to stay silent.
No, there's no conceivable way.
Excuse me.
Go ahead, sorry.
Excuse me, thank you.
Well, we can make a statement that just says.
I would like to take the floor at this time. I understand that you were against that decision. I understand that politically you would like to repeal it.
It's not a, it's, don't make a political assumption.
It's okay. I understand that you would like to repeal that.
I understand you don't want to talk about it.
I excuse me, A, I have the floor and B, don't put words in my mouth.
Then don't put words in mine.
Okay.
Guessing it was a political move. But you've done more than once.
Do you want to step outside? I mean, don't bring up, and don't bring up other things. So let's stay focused on this.
You just challenged me to a fight in a board meeting?
You said I've done something more than once.
This is not the first time that you have suggested that I have political motivations. This is a simple survey question based on votes that were done by a previous board. It's well within the scope, not only of this question, but of my responsibility as a board member to suggest this. And then for you to come back and say that it's politically motivated or that we should somehow step outside to resolve this is ridiculous. And we know that.
We take two minutes? Yeah, let's take a minute. So I apologize. All right. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. I just want to say during the break, trustee Kudo and I did talk, we did not step outside. It was a poor choice of language on my side, but I'm glad to have the opportunity to start fresh. So I would like to hear from trustee Kudo what you would like to propose.
There was a, with a change made by a previous board. There was a change made to ordinances in the village suggesting that, that we moved from 1.7 parking spots, off-street parking spots per unit to one off-street parking spot per unit. Whether it's a one-bedroom unit, a two-bedroom unit, a three-bedroom. I believe without any evidence, because we don't have a new parking study, that that will lead to increased on-street parking in the village. Would like to I would like to know or add that to this as a policy change that was made. And people can determine whether or not they agree with it, disagree with it, but I mean, whatever. But it happened. It exists. It's our current position of the one. And I would like it included in the question.
Trustee Stokbrand?
Um, shouldn't it be a separate question? I agree, it should be in the, in the survey, but I don't see that it really works in this number two.
Would you say I'm not for or against this question one way or another? I'd be happy to include it, but I just, I'm not following what wants to be asked. Can we try to get this down into a, a, a question for, for me to digest? You know what I mean? And then I can say, yes, I like that question or don't like that question.
I, I'd be on the same, same level here as, as trustee Lynn. I, you know, I, I'm open to the question. I think it just needs to be less sort of complicated for, for just, you know, an average resident. And I, I know it's, you know, not super complicated, but one to 1.7 is a little bit sort of complicated for people to understand. So if there's a way of rewording this question, I'd be open to it. You know, but like a previous board determined this and one to 1.7. I, I think that's just too much. I think if we sort of simplified the question and figured out, you know, what we're really getting at, you know? You know, whether it be, are you open to uh, increased parking for new development? And that's, I don't think there's a lot of people that are really interested in that. But, you know, again, this goes to the question of the DPW and, and they're being nuanced because, because these apartments, these new developments are going to be more, more expensive per unit if they don't, if they're not able to get the parking that they need. So it becomes affordable housing question almost as well. You know, if, so. But I, I'm just saying, I, I'd be open to a question if, if it was worded maybe a little differently, but on the same sort of vein.
Trustee Stokbrand?
It could be a bullet point. So after the bullet point on monthly overnight parking permits, the next bullet point would be new construction apartments will now be required to provide one parking space per, per unit. Whereas previously, 1.5, 1.75 spaces were required per unit. It's very straightforward.
I, I think that is a good solution. And instead of the intro being like, in 2021, just in recent years, the village board has made several parking policy changes. And kind of keep it a little more simple up there. It does not have to end right there, but you know, I, you know, made parking policy changes, you know, in an effort to make parking more available and accessible, you know, right, you know, recommendations from parking analysis, from stakeholders, right? I think we could make it kind of a little bit more neutral lead in, just like in recent years, there have been changes. And then there's the bullet point of the monthly one. And then like trustee Stokbrand said, then there's the other one that there is the change in parking requirements. It seemed, it, it seems like it would be pretty straightforward if we just say like, in recent years, there have been a number of changes. You know,
Policy.
To the, to the policy.
Right. I'm fine with that. I mean, I, you know, I just don't. Again, I have a problem with the premise. Part of my problem is with the premise. In an effort to make parking more available, accessible, reduce the amount of off-street parking. I don't understand that makes it accessible. So. Um, but I'm fine with, you know, with change, with putting a period after policy changes and then laying it out. Out.
Attorney Bear?
I was just going to reference, I thought it might be helpful.
I was just going to reference, I thought it might be helpful. The, the requirement is in 53547. So you may want to look at that just so that you're using consistent language. Because there's three separate, there's requirements for apartment hotels, hotels, motels and private clubs. Then there's another one for multifamily dwelling units, which is the one that was changed. And then there's the third one, which is one and two family dwellings, which has remained a one to one ratio, um, which is what it's always been. So the one that changed was under sub two, which is the multifamily dwelling units. So that, that's the one that changed. The one in family, one and two family dwellings was always been one to one. So that just, just to use consistent language so that it's consistent with 53547, however you want to do it.
You have a suggestion?
I, I guess the, I would just, if you're going to ask about the change, then just make sure you use multifamily dwelling unit in, in the question. Cause I think there was some confusion. It sounded like based on the discussion that it was changed also for every dwelling unit. It, the, the one for one and two family had, wasn't touched. And then the sub one under 53547A was not touched. It was just the multifamily is the one that they changed the ratio on.
So could you put apartments in parentheses? Multifamily dwelling units parentheses apartments?
I think it's important to use the statutory.
Yeah. I mean, theoretically it's, that's kind of what it means.
I think people know what multifamily dwelling units are. I think they would.
Multifamily dwellings.
Yeah. Consistent with what it says. And I think people know what that is.
So what we're saying here is that we would add just a bullet point to question number two under parking. And that bullet point. So we're not taking away anything from the paragraph or the other bullet point. We're just adding another bullet point. And then they get the same options, positive, negative mix, no impact to answer that, that point.
I thought we were changing.
I think we're augmenting the paragraph, but not augmenting the first.
Yeah, I have in recent years instead of in 2021.
So, so remove in 2021 to.
End of statement. Village Board made several parking policy changes. Changes were adopted based on. Please review the following changes. Bullet point one, monthly on street parking permit. Bullet point two, multifamily dwelling units had a ratio change from 1.75.
Okay. And then people just say positive to that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't, I mean, I, it's not one of those things that, that people are going to, you know, I think it's going to get more negative than positive because the people, you know, that are going to answer it are, you know, going to be against it. And the people that, people that are for it probably won't even, I, I don't know. Uh, I'm, I'm okay with it, you know, I think it's fine. My only question is now we're going down this sort of trail here is, are there other, are we missing any other sort of implementations, parking implementations that we took from this transportation survey or analysis that we're not including in here?
Well, this would be the time to bring them up.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
Nobody's got ones.
Is, is, where's Bart? Bart?
Yeah.
Hopefully he's.
Yeah. I think to your point, I, I think in all fairness, it would be, you know, it might be something that we would want to reconsider just to actually review which policy changes could be included.
There's been a lot of work we've done for parking in this, in this analysis. And I just, I feel like if, if, you know, we, if we're going to go down this, this path, we should add everything.
Thorough. Yeah.
I hate to do that. I mean, I'd be okay with just making that one little change so that we can just ask the rest of these, all these other questions are fine. I mean.
The other question I guess I would like to know is what kind of information are we looking for? From getting these responses to both of these. So what would we do with that?
The one we could actually include is the price of the overnight permit, parking permit. I mean, because that's been kind of a, you know, people have discussed that. I know in the community I've heard, I've heard about that. So I, we get the actual numbers unfortunately right now. I think it was like $40 a night or $40 a, a month. Anyways.
It's a good consideration.
But I'm, I'm fine if we just add this other one. I don't, you know, I just, I, I kind of feel like we're doing this question a disservice if we're not adding more or the other things that we've changed. But I, I'm, I'm cool with, with the direction that we're headed right now.
I don't know. Am I the only one who was on the board then? You know, Arthur, I mean, we worked through this a lot with the parking. And I think clearly those two bullet points cover the biggest issues that were changed.
You don't think price for parking permit?
Compared to the availability question? I mean, I, I think people are always going to complain that something's high.
Yeah, exactly. Nobody's gonna be like $40. I'm pos, I'm cool with that, you know? I, I don't think that's.
I mean, I think this is a way to get feedback on something that the village did.
Yeah.
So why would we not?
So leave the parking permit price off of bullet one after all? Okay. It's not on there currently. I thought you were asking for an addition there. Of the $40 or have you?
I don't think we need it.
Okay. Let's, you know, unfortunately, this is a tough one to, uh, end the, the meeting with because there's just so much nuance here and there's so much. And I think we're all at a kind of a point where, you know, we want to wrap it up. So, but I, I would say if you want to add, trustee Stokbrand, you want to repeat what you actually said? That you'd see the bullet point being?
So in the beginning, I, we would take out in 2021 and just say the village board recently made several parking policy changes, period. The changes were adopted based on recommendations from 2019 to 2020 transportation and parking analysis. That's just as it stands. The next second sentence would be as it stands. The second bullet point would say new construction apart, I'm sorry. New construction multifamily dwelling units would be required to have one parking space for each unit. A decrease from 1.75 parking spaces per unit.
They give to specify. Maybe I didn't hear you say.
I didn't see.
One of.
Specify off.
Off street.
Okay. So is that clear? Um, support? Just a show of hands. So we're ready, know whether we're ready to move on? Okay. Any other suggestions for the survey for the final draft? Okay. With that, I would take a motion unless you're still scrolling. Everybody's still scrolling. Yes, trustee Lynn.
So I move to approve the 2023 community survey and associated communication and project plan with the
aforementioned.
Aforementioned changes at the Monday, May 1st, 2023 meeting.
Second. Okay. Um, motion by trustee Lynn. Um, who wants it? Second by trustee Stokbrand. Any further discussion?
To confirm that includes beaches or beach under the first one? Okay. Making sure.
Good for you. I'd forgotten about that one. All right. I just want to say thank you, everyone, for taking the extra time to get it done. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six zero. We lost trustee Arndor for maybe about.
He, um, had no connectivity at nine 28. So, and he's been talking back and forth and it's not coming back for him.
Okay. Thanks for, um, noting that.
Working through that.
All right. That concludes, I just need to find, um.
Yes.
Get back to the agenda. I believe that concludes new business.
Uh, no, uh, save the bus.
Yep. Okay. Item nine E, consider resolution 2023 dash 11, save the bus, hashtag save the bus. A resolution in support of Milwaukee County Transit System. This item is coming after a presentation we received at the previous meet, at the last meeting, April 17th. Um, it's pretty straightforward.
Are you ready for a motion?
I am. Okay.
I move to approve a resolution number 2023 dash 11, hashtag save the bus, a resolution in support of Milwaukee County Transit System.
Second.
Okay. Motion by trustee Moore Baldoff.
Kudo.
Second by trustee Kudo. Any further discussion? Hearing none, this will be a roll call vote. Trustee Moore Baldoff?
Yes.
Trustee Kudo?
Yes.
Trustee Lynn?
Aye.
Trustee Stokbrand?
Aye.
President McCaig?
Aye.
Trustee Ursink?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero. Excellent. Thank you. That concludes new business. Moving on to item 10, reports of village officials. 10A three, the under village president, um, proclamation municipal clerks appreciation week. And I think we feel a lot of appreciation, not just this week. 54th Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week, May 1 through May 5, 2023. Whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk, a time honored and vital part of local government exists throughout the world. And whereas the office of professional municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants. And whereas the office of professional municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies and agencies of government at other levels. And whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. And whereas the professional municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. And whereas the professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of professional municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. And whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of professional municipal clerk. Now therefore I, Anne McCaig, president of the village of Shorewood, do recognize the week of May 1st through May 5th, 2023 as professional municipal clerks week and further extend appreciation to our professional municipal clerk staff, Clerk, Clerk Toya Harrell and Cruchel and Terry Repins for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent or they present, yeah, represent. And I have, I will continue by saying I've lost count on how many, um, honors have been bestowed upon Clerk Harrell at her national and Wisconsin association bodies, professional associations. Thank you for representing and striving. All right. Um, recap on who we are collaboration. Um, as you all know, the event was last week. I believe Kathy Stokbrand and trustee Ursink were able to attend and I didn't see everybody. Were there other people there?
I was out of the country.
I know you were in the Bahamas, right?
I said the Dominican Republic.
Okay. Well done. Village manager Rebecca Ewald was there and also director group and truck, I believe, were able to, and, um, joined by the school board. I was pleased, I just appreciative of all the collaboration. I don't know if trustee Stokbrand or trustee Ursink, you want to share anything about attending?
I just thought it was extremely meaningful and, um, I was reading in the update about possibly, you know, having this requirement or onboarding new employees. I would support that, whatever, you know, if we have to pay for a royalty, whatever. I just think the more people that see it, the better. And, um, I want to thank everybody who was involved in bringing it to the village.
I want to agree with trustee Stokbrand. It was a, just a fantastic experience, a really great turnout. Want to thank the schools and, and the village and all the other stakeholders that, that came together to, to bring this film and the speaker in. Uh, it was a really valuable experience and, um, and I'm glad I was there.
We had a, um, debrief, um, amongst the partners on Friday and, um, the project staff for the project, uh, joined us and was able to share some additional resources, um, for free that we can use. And the partners expressed interest in, um, you know, the library owns the film and so, and the licensing. So we can host more screenings. The school is interested in partnering if, you know, if the students want to be leading the talkback the way that they did, we can feature other, um, guests. We brainstormed a lot of ideas and so.
It's on Netflix.
Yes. And we're going to follow up with, um, in terms of, yeah.
Doesn't get any better than that, right?
Yeah. So, um, we're gonna, I think village manager Ewald is gonna follow up with, um, communications that promote the accessibility of the film on streaming and also through the library. So, thank you. North Star Fire Department meeting, April 25th. We basically approved the resolution that you all approved tonight. And I was elected, uh, president of the board. It rotates. So it wasn't by, uh, popularity. It was just by. We got to Shorewood. Village, oh, and I attended the town hall yesterday. Kathy, trustee Stokbrand was there as well, um, with state representative Darren Madison about the budget. We had about 20 people, I believe, come, um, and, um, so appreciative of that as well. Reports of village, village trustees. Trustee Ursink.
Uh, make it quick. I just want to show some appreciation to the DPW staff and the Shorewood Men's Club and also village staff for coming out and supporting Arbor Day over at Triangle Park as well as uh, president McCaig is a really fantastic event, really, uh, well attended. Oh, also the, uh, environmental club from SIS and, uh, Mrs. Copeland, uh, really fantastic turnout, a great, great day. And just so appreciative of the staff at DPW. They're so knowledgeable and we're just so fortunate to have, uh, the crew of guys that we have. And we have two new beautiful trees at Triangle Park.
There's trustee Stokbrand?
It was cold, but there was a King's Day ride.
Oh, thanks for representing. I was, uh, held at work. So sorry to miss that. But I got my butchered on. Okay. Village manager?
Um, I just, I want to echo the Arbor Day celebrations. I mean, two weeks in a row, I've just been blown away by the community, the first of who we are. It just, it was incredible. It was really, it made me really proud for wood. And then the Arbor Day, I, those guys, those forestry guys, I learned something every time. I had no, I mean, it was just, it was, I've never seen, I've been here five years. At Arbor Day celebration, there was literally, uh, like a cross segment of the entire community. And it was really organic and it was great. It, it just left you smiling. So thank you to everyone who showed up and that cute little bunny.
That's good.
So, I mean, I just, I, it was really invigorating and, and wonderful to see the space activated in.
One last thing?
Yeah.
Just want to say, uh, Shorewood Little League has started up for the season and, uh, unfortunately, uh, we were going to play the Mets tonight, which Eric Kudo's daughter is on and, uh, and it was rained out. We had several rainouts, uh, this season. I can't believe we start baseball at this point, but here we are.
Sports.
There was a team that played Sunday in a downpour and they played the whole game in an absolute downpour, which is an absolute, which is a nightmare. I ran the concession stand. So I was nice and warm.
So cold.
He played that morning.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yep. I have many experiences in those stands being cold. Future items. Consideration. Motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned at 10:19 PM. We are adjourned at ten nineteen P M.